I'm sorry, Ms. Conley, yep, we're just gonna push that got it button and you'll be all set.
There you go. Yes, you're all set.
All right, thank you. We now have our technology taken care of. Thank you, Steph and his staff. We are now in open session of the Situate Select Board. It's Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. The Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect for immunity. We ask that all members interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. And in addition, I would like to ask that all boards and committees in the towns that should read that statement prior to their meetings. We can't make you do it, but we would greatly appreciate it if you would make that statement. Our diversity community worked a long time on making that, getting that statement together. And we feel strongly that it sends the right message to everyone. Now, walk-ins. Do I see any walk-ins? All right. So everyone here is on the agenda for something, right? Very good. Now, I would like to call for a reorganization of the select board. For those of you who are not familiar, every year at this time, we reorganize the board and the current chairman steps aside and we elect a new chairman, a new vice chair, a clerk. And that's what we're about tonight. So do I hear a nomination for chair?
May I just make a comment first before we move on? So on behalf of the board, we would like to thank you for serving for the past year. You did a great job. It's a lot of work for those of you who are out there. I don't think you may realize how much time it takes for a chair to run this town. So we are all grateful for you and on behalf... It's nominated.
No. Well, and before I accept nominations, I will say it's been a pleasure to serve as chair. As Laura says, it is a lot of extra work, but it's worth it. You get to really see how things work in town. And without the support of this board, I think you all realize that we're all just one vote. And when we get to town meetings, we're all just one vote. So I just want to thank my fellow board members for their excellent service and would like to particularly thank the town clerk for running a wonderful election on Saturday. She had a bit of an emergency in the morning when Verizon went down and she didn't have her systems working. But you never know with Kathy, she just gets stuff done and so the election went off, election day went on. And I do want to thank especially all the coworkers. They work very hard. And I don't think people recognize that it takes a lot of people to run an election. And they are all wonderful people and we all appreciate them very much. And many thanks to our town clerk. So with that said, I may have nomination for chair.
First, I want to say congratulations Karen Karen for getting reelected and being on the board for the next three years. I think this next upcoming year is Tony's last year, if I'm correct. Serving, um, well, that's a term. Served for how many years, Tony? Twelve still for her?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. There you go. Well, I would like to nominate Tony Benyani as the chair for the upcoming facility.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Did you vote for this?
Do we move yet or do we let the rest of it go through?
You can do the rest.
So vice chair, do I hear a motion?
If I may make a comment?
Of course. So we have been, I have brought this up in the past, that we've had a tradition of the prior chair being vice chair. It's not, in our charter, it's not in our bylaws. And I have advocated that it makes sense to have someone who is training for the job to be a vice chair like you would in the private sector. So as, as an outstanding job, as you would do in that, well, as we have traditionally done, I would like to look to the board to train us, because I think you're all trained. Next person, and in that thing, I would like to nominate Andrew Goodrich for vice chair. Very good. Second. Second by Ms. Karen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Clerk.
Oh, and since I don't want to do, oh, so. Not supposed to say that. No, it's, I think because of her longstanding, how many years you've been serving on this board now? Eight years. I think that Ms. Karen would make an outstanding clerk because sometimes there's a lot to do on that character and that character role too. And I would like to nominate Juan Curran for board clerk.
Not on board.
Or Kathy, don't worry. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Benyani. All in favor? Aye. Five zero, motion carries. And we're going to switch seats and I can't get a gallop. That's the low seat. Right over the seats up here. We can cheer this too. I feel like we should cheer for you guys.
Thank you all for having a little bit of confidence.
More than.
See if I know how to do this. All right, well, it is 7:15, so I'm gonna, I know Cam's here somewhere. Cam, I'm at a whole job for just one second so that we can get into this public hearing that was supposed to start at 7:15. So if the people for the alcohol alcoholic restaurant liquor license for wine bar, are they here?
Just whip one of these chairs around here.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us.
Welcome. We've been waiting for you.
We've been waiting too.
We've heard all these rumors for a long time and...
Here we are. They weren't false. It's been at least six months. I could say to my friends, I don't know. Yeah, well, everything's taking a little bit of a while these days.
We have no licenses left.
I was getting so rain we'd talked. This is first act this week.
Tell us what you're looking to do and we've got the pictures, we've got the layout and all that stuff, so tell us about your concept.
Yeah, so obviously there's a lot of information in that application packet. What we're looking to do is open up a wine bar restaurant on Front Street. And we're looking to do something a little bit different from sort of what you see in the South Bay area. Where we're really focusing on wine and food to go with wine as opposed to vice versa. Lots of restaurants are started by chefs and we are both wine people, started a restaurant and business people started a restaurant. So yeah, so we're, you know, we want to focus more on bringing small productions, you know, wines that represent a place and the people who make them and are things that you don't see in other places. And then pairing food, sort of, you know, geographically diverse cuisine to pair with those.
And we've spoken...
I just, I need to ask you your names before you guys start for the record, so if you can just tell me who you are.
Sure, Joseph Yor.
And what's your roles here?
Shannon Yor is my wife. So we are co-partners, yeah.
Shannon Yor. I'm Jennifer Olson, the wine. And we've also spoken to and reached out to quite a few local farmers. And we really want to be able to bring as much of that local mentality that we can. I think there are times that we don't see as much of the utilization of local farms and local curators as, I would like, I grew up in the acid. I was there until I was 23 and then we dug a very wide world of restaurants in San Francisco, DC. And want to bring a lot of that ideology. So if I wanted to talk to local farmers and local curators and see their excitement, actually have their products in places down in Citroen, they can really show off what they do versus just having farmers markets and some of those other small outlets for themselves.
Great. All right, I'll go over to the board for any questions? Any...
Not yet.
Okay. Anyone have any?
Do you own the wine store that...
We do.
You do?
Yes.
So then you've been there for quite a few years?
Yep, so March was four years.
Right.
In that. Previously, in my previous life, I was an accountant, so I had a business background. Started taking wine classes for fun just after I had, we lived in Europe for a couple of years. And so when we were there, we would travel and go to vineyards and sort of got into it over there. Came back and just started taking classes and then decided I wanted to work for myself and open up my own business and sort of decided to combine my business knowledge with my passion for wine. And we opened up Arrow Divide in March 2018. And then Jen joined us December of 2020.
Yep. So I've been, I've been in the restaurant industry, mind your tab for here. I moved to San Francisco when I was 23 with chemistry background, which we, to study wine making. Found out where sommelier was, loved being in restaurant industry, decided that would be my path. So I'm an advanced level sommelier. My background is very high level fine dining. But one of the wonderful parts of that is the understanding that this service aspect of what makes fine dining kind of what it is can be brought to any environment. And it's about care, concern, confidence, and bringing some of that whimsy and knowledge to what we're trying to do. I was, I moved back to, to the area. I was hired by the Red Sox to revamp hospitality for Vermont and White. They wanted to bring out a high-end fine dining component to the ballpark and in the private side and then corporate. So in December of 2020, I was given recommendations to speak to Shannon. She said, I don't know what I can offer you, and I said, just let me do anything. Anything at all. Yep, so I delivered these, breaking that boxes and all that. We started talking about a wine bar and and this universe has it, the space opened up about six weeks later and we've been working on it since March of last year.
Yeah.
Probably 24.
Just a couple of questions. I think the concept is really cool. So then I'm sure there will be... What, when are you thinking of opening? Because that's all anyone's guess.
So late June, early July. The construction should be substantially complete actually this week, this week or next week. And then we have, you know, hiring, training, getting the sort of furnishings and stuff all finished. But the, but the construction, the actual build out is pretty close to being done. So then it's just waiting on, you know, all that stuff and then the little flip.
Okay, so I just had a couple of just sort of specifics on the backup. The backup was very thorough and complete. I wasn't clear on the outdoor seating request. Is there some kind of barrier between that and sidewalk? I can see there's an entrance from the, you have to come into the, into the restaurant and then go out to the dining.
Yep.
Is there some kind of barrier going to be between those seats and the sidewalk? So folks aren't just coming along the street that way?
So that's also our ADA access, so we can't walk in entirely.
Oh, into the...
Yeah, the side, that, that sort of side entrance is the ADA entrance because the front has the renovation of the building, the stairs in the front. So the, so we can't walk in entirely, but it's, it's, we would have been planning to work with it. There's, you know, a substantial walkway that will be for the ADA access. And then next to that will be tables, which the front of which will be locks with a planter.
Yeah, it's just obviously...
It will maybe be allowed to be seated through a hostess. Yes, so it will be locked in there and our, our dedication to the ADA access is very thorough. And we're gonna, as we agree with the planning board, we're going to paint the area that is allowed for seating and leave the other area and then write, you know, standing where the ADA access is.
And then I assume that you went over parking with plan it? Because that's obviously there's some parking there. And the last question I had specific was a, I wasn't sure about it. It's amplified acoustic music you want for the outdoor? I wasn't sure what you were going to cover.
Yeah, just, I mean, literally just, again, the potential for like a person and their guitar with like a small amp. Just so that people can hear. But most more likely that would be indoors and I would just, if we're gonna do outdoor music, it would be like, you know, person and their guitar. And that was, I think that was, for, for us, that was also to approach private event capabilities where we would have somebody out there and there would be people kind of me and her back and forth.
All right, because it is, it's mixed use down there, so.
Yeah, very important of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations. This looks great. How many, it's, it's a, it's a different leap, right? From running a wine store?
Yes.
To running a restaurant and a, and a wine bar, I would imagine. Any type of additional courses that you take in is one question. And secondly, how many staff do you anticipate having? And for the public, the occupancy is what, eight one?
Indoor inside, yeah. Do you want to speak? Yeah, so I mean, the real difference between, you know, Arrow Line and this is Jen. So it was one of those things that for years, you know, we've talked about how we wanted to do something like this. But we really needed someone who had the restaurant experience and not, you know, not just the sort of wine or business side, right? And that's what Jen has done through the past 20 plus years of her career, is all been in the restaurant space. At, at, you know, after the sommelier, on the floor.
And then also opening restaurants.
Yeah, yeah.
I would imagine your tips certified as well.
Yeah, yeah, all of that. And I, I, and when I was at Calway, I went through every certification. Imagine it was very, very, you know, I, I did all of the CPR classes, all the surf save. Everything has to be...
And then your goal for staffing? I know staffing is tough right now in the industry, but what is your goal?
Yeah, so I, we're, what we're hoping is that, you know, we can provide almost, you know, full-time hours. So we're, so it's less about piecemealing together staff. So I think we talked about, you know, and second to staff... Four, three, three in the kitchen? Yep, three in the kitchen with a dishwasher. So chef, sous chef and a line cook and a dishwasher in the kitchen. Most likely four, but perhaps five, depending on whether the patio is open for servers. I will be, Shannon's gonna be on the floor most of the time as well. But I will be on the floor all five days a week from open to close. I also have a assistant general manager who has been in the industry and understands that. Two bartenders behind the bar and then two runners slash hosters. But I work my butt off, so I'm all those things.
So that's great. I was just trying to get a sense, you know, we see on the floor plan, you drive by, just to get a sense of, of staff that was there. And my other question is, the outside patio piece, is that adjacent to the gas station? Are we putting up any type of a barrier?
There's a fence.
Is there already a fence?
Yeah, we have the, the land, the, got a, the property building, Lane Curtis, whatever fence.
Okay, great.
Which originally wasn't there?
Yeah.
And so we didn't go for outdoor seating seats?
Six foot fence.
Yeah, yeah. And then you put it up and we were like, oh, now you can actually sit out there and it would be really nice. So ADA access is directly next to the building and then the patio tables will be next to the back porch where the gas is.
Thank you. So it's great.
My only other question would be on the hours of operation. I see here it's supposed to be 8:00 AM. Is that for brunch type room or is that just for folks to, for staff to get in and prepare or?
So that's a little bit for private events as well? Like if, if anybody wanted to do a, you know, a baby shower brunch or something? So that we're not, it's not our original intention to be open at 8:00 AM. But we want to be able to have the ability if something came up. Yeah, our intention, our proposed sort of business hours that we went through the planning board are, are, you know, much more condensed than...
And evening focused.
Yeah.
Great. Just to add on to some of the questions, so the outdoor seating is, I'm looking at your floor plan now. It is on the north side of the pitcher, the, the top. So you're gonna walk in the restaurant and out the door through the bar, past the bar to get outside? And how many tables you gonna put up there?
There's 18 seats is what we're looking to.
18 seats.
Yeah, so at this point, four take, four, four, four tops and then one twos.
So you're gonna have almost 100 seats.
Eighteen inside out?
Yeah.
And when I looked at it, it looked, it looks great, but it looks dense. Like it looks like there's not a lot standing room and there's, you know, there's anyone people in. It's just the backside and we're still being, right? It's the...
It's the right hand side, so we're looking at the building next to the right. But it's also, we took, it's not just front to back, it's, we took a little extra space to the...
It seems...
Our mentality is to, is to harbor side nutrition. Our mentality is to keep standing room to a very minimum. We are always going to, and this is where my restaurant background comes in, of understanding, being able to not make a, a flow of service for our staff, but also having an environment for our guests where there aren't people reaching over each other, there aren't people bumping into your chairs. We want to maintain an atmosphere that is convivial and fun, but is also very respectful to both the guests and our staff. We are not looking to pack this space. We are not looking to have standing room only where people are, you know, too deep in the bar. We are looking to bring an aspect to the restaurant where it is a very comfortable, but very lively atmosphere.
And, and seating.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
The only place that we're sort of counting for standing room is at that drink rail. So it's sort of contained at that, that's where the 14 standing rooms come in.
And that whole area from the drink rail to the tables that the back have will be completely clear. So there will only be allowed to be one person either at that counter.
So that brings the next question that somebody brought up is parking. So I know Bob is over here, you know, and say, where are you gonna park all these 100 people that are gonna come to this restaurant? I mean, I know we have problems with all the places now just trying to find parking. Are you gonna, are you directing them somewhere or are you valuing, or are you, where do you?
We'll be recommending the common law, the public law. In terms of what is happening by the Mill Wharf, especially with the expansion of salt society, those spaces are, are full up almost all of the time. With the ability to have parking down at the end of Front Street as well as in the common law, one of the things that we spoke about that was really intriguing to us is how, how able and willing people are to walk up and down a front street and being able to park in that back lot and walk the, the two lanes, whereas that's not necessarily the case in this.
Yeah, I think, well, the, the lot behind is a private lot.
That's what I'm saying, that one's almost always, that's, that's a full private lot.
Right.
So we're speaking of the, the common law.
Wait, maybe, maybe I can go to Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
What was, what was your take on the common law?
The take on the parking is people won't have to walk. I mean, that's the bottom line. Because the Welsh company, the Mill Wharf, that is a private parking lot. And once upon a time, when I worked there back in the day, it closed at 6 o'clock at night. There was a gate and if you got locked in, you wouldn't be able to do anything. So then when another restaurant opens, they start the same thing up again and you had to prove that you were going to the Welsh company or wherever. You weren't allowed to park in the parking lot. So it has evolved. I was chairman of the parking study 30 years ago. And the bottom line is if people want what you have, they will get there.
But, but they will also park wherever they want.
Well, then that has to do with enforcement here. It's enforcement of the lack thereof.
So I don't know, are you gonna, are you gonna suggest to people, like say, this is where we prefer you to park that?
On the website, we'll have, we'll have recommendations for parking away.
Um, just to add to Laura's question about tips, are all the bartender will be tipped certified?
And, yeah.
And are you gonna have the machine that does the IDs?
That is not a plan of ours right now. I, I would say because of what our model is, which is theoretically a higher aged population. There's not, we, now, this is of course not to say that this won't happen, but as, as a higher end wine bar experience, we are planning on our beach group being more in the 25, 30 to, you know, plus range. But they will be very well trained. Having worked in cities for most of my career, I have not only dealt with underage people coming in, but importantly, I've dealt with an enormous amount of underage students. Especially in DC being right by the White House. There were, there were people coming in from NYC all the time. And I was lucky enough to be very well trained in that platform, so.
So did I hear you say the bartenders are gonna be tipped or?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I agree with you, we're, by the way, we're all the pluses. And I agree, but I just need you to know that we take it very seriously.
Absolutely.
And if you do, if you serve underage people, you will face it very strongly.
Without a doubt. I take it very seriously as well.
I just want to add to that, that we do feel very strongly that our restaurants do get that additional software machine. And does, in fact, do we still have the GRAD program?
No. And it's something we can certainly look into. I, I dealt with that at Calway as well.
Just make consistent, match us well worthy, because you never know.
I don't know if we require an employing establishment model or we require a package source.
We'll make sure they have the books as well though. So everyone will have the books and be very aware of what any local New England license looks like and have as much information as possible for someone who brings in a license that is from a state that they might not be familiar with. They will know that they are allowed to take as much time as possible to inspect that ID and to come to a manager if they have any questions at all.
The only other two questions I have are amplified music and the hours. I see your, your hours are from 1:00 AM, seven days a week.
And again, that's more for if we do have a private event and they want it to go later. Our intended business hours are...
Well, that is a residential area as well. You, you apply to...
And there's gonna be condos upstairs too, so.
So Lorraine, can you help me? I know I ask you this every time we talk about this. Are, does every place down there have a license until COVID?
Yes.
Until 1:00 in the morning, seven days a week?
The, I sent out, had a time, the liquor license list, and it should be in your back of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it. And, yeah, we use that as a guide. If you look at... As of now, our scheduled operating hours is 10 o'clock Wednesday through Saturday and 9 on Sunday. Their entertainment hours are different from here?
Yeah. Well, it's just in general, the...
Yeah, in general, it's only relevant, say, at my Bernie's midnight, Monday through Thursday, and then 1:00 Friday through Sunday. For the most part, the galley's until 1:00 AM. Chopsticks and forks is until 1:00 AM. They have a limit on their outside to 10:00 AM, chopsticks and forks. Bocket's house is 1:00 AM. Sorry, Mill Wharf is 1:00 AM, so.
So we have some at 12 and some at 1. And are we gonna do it, this is probably looking at, but different from the outside? What time does the outside shut down? At 10?
The whole restaurant would be 1:00 AM. The outside music would be, I'm looking for one, what is it? 10:00.
Don't we have galley breakdown earlier though outside? Chopsticks?
Galley does not have an outside.
Chopsticks, forks and outside, because chopsticks has no outside.
That's a temporary COVID thing.
Outside.
10 o'clock. Their permit license is 10 o'clock.
Oh, sorry.
On the, on the street. That's just a COVID case.
Yeah, so I would think that we would shut the outside down at 10.
Yep.
And then what, what's first goes to the operations at 10:00 AM? I don't know, is, did people feel shutting off 1 or 12? It's a, it's a mix.
I do have one. And, and this really is not a reflection on your application, which is strong and we're excited about. We did receive a letter from a resident who lives at the Mill Wharf who supported your bar, wasn't about you guys, but it was about exactly this issue of, you know, if folks stay open until 1:00 in the morning, and most of our bars down there are allowed to, then there's rather boisterous conversation as they... then, um, there's rather boisterous conversation as they walk back to the Cole Parkway to, um, their vehicles. Um, and that that's becoming a problem in our mixed-use areas, so I don't think now's the time, but I think, I would really think we need to revisit, sort of generally speaking, as we move towards more mixed use in all of our business districts, whether or not we need to revisit the one o'clock as a general rule. I, I personally think that almost everybody has a one o'clock, they're not intending to stay open to one, I think we should be consistent until we look at the whole policy down the road, and then obviously we flip from lots of folks that have been in that conversation. That's my take on that one, but it did bring up a really important concern going forward, I think, with everything.
Yeah, particularly if you're gonna have a private party, because that's a lot of people meeting at one o'clock, that, I, I would like to see it at ten and twelve.
Right.
Um, I don't know how you guys feel about that on the rest of the board, but that's.
Mean ten outside?
Ten outside and twelve o'clock.
Operating.
Uh, for operating. Is that a big problem or? Yeah, I don't know.
We, I mean, we, we just use the other, you know, local, the, the back line.
Yeah, 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 it, it's a mix between the two.
The only thing that comes to my head fresh here is just, you know, New Year's Eve, you know, shut it down at twelve o'clock, one kind of a.
If you can't do it, so.
We could come ask for temporary.
Probably.
Yes.
Otherwise, otherwise, yeah, I can't imagine it being too much activity at twelve.
Not good.
Those are striking as a type of crowds, so we sit at the bar till one o'clock in the morning. Throw this one, you wipe.
Well, you said that, now you curse myself.
I actually have a question.
I'm gonna be there till three in the morning.
I'm home at ten to sleep.
I actually have a question on the other end of the hours, so eight AM. Is it really necessary, it sounds really early to me, um.
Again, we just sort of went with, sort of, uh.
So I would think if you're half a specially men, you could always come for a special, specially men exception or permit. Um, is that eight AM, I don't know, I just.
Mostly our ones are at ten.
Yeah, they're at ten, that's what I'm looking at.
Well, Sunday starts at ten.
Right.
Um.
So ten to twelve.
Except for the Mill Warf.
So.
Ten to twelve and ten to two, does that make sense? That's operation, you guys can go on the number one. And then lastly, the entertainment, so amplified and acoustic, I think, are opposites. Um, so, what are we doing, I don't think you can have amplified outside. We have the outside would be acoustic, but. Correct me if I'm wrong, we, I thought we didn't allow amplified music outside.
I think they're talking about a guitar player with a little amplifier.
Yeah.
And music, they're not talking about being like a big.
Just asking what the rules are.
Yeah.
That's what they say here, and then all of a sudden, this call was just like.
Shut down the whole place for a long party.
Um, so, I would say no amplified outside. I mean, there's only, how many tables you say outside, four?
Four, four dot two, yeah, it's a small space, yeah, and with two.
Yeah. Have any? All of that, all right, how about inside, do we allow amplified inside?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
We need it.
Yeah. And where would you put a band in there?
There, there wouldn't be a band, there'd be that.
Or, or where would you play, what's on playing guitar?
Um, in that, in the front sort of lounge area.
Oh, over that round table, is?
If you take that. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other, I don't have any other questions. Are we good with operations from ten to twelve, out, uh, inside and ten to ten outside?
I'm sorry, I just wanna go back and understand, hours of operation Monday through Saturday, what time are you saying?
Yeah.
We have.
Uh, ten to twelve.
Ten AM.
Seven days.
Ten AM to twelve PM.
Monday through Sunday. And outside would be?
So that's Monday through Sunday. Okay, sorry, I have to.
Go on. And then outside would be ten AM to ten PM. And then just no amplified outside for the. And if you have, again, if you had an event, then you would come to us.
The tents are not that big, as well, because we don't want anything wrong going on outside anyways, but that's what we're.
Yes.
Right on the edge.
I'm sorry, outdoor hours will be ten AM to ten PM?
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, the entertainment, uh, seven days a week. Twelve PM to twelve AM indoor or no?
Uh.
Yeah.
It can be in and out, but only amplified in.
No, because they don't want out at twelve PM, so we have to.
Oh, right, I'm, I'm hearing.
Yeah.
So twelve to ten, twelve to ten outside, twelve to twelve inside.
I'm sorry. Okay, twelve to twelve inside with amplified and twelve to ten non-amplified guitarist. Non-amplified music inside.
Is it, is it possible to think of eleven to ten outside for non-amplified, just in case we start a brunch at eleven?
Sure.
If that's okay? Because eleven is kind of a normal brunch, yeah.
Yeah.
So you mean inside?
Well.
Do you want all eleven?
You could start brunch at ten AM on Sunday.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So we'd be ten.
And all the other restaurants have that, so, so that would be great. A hundred and one.
Ten's fine.
Okay, ten AM.
Just not a lot of musicians like that at ten AM.
No, we're also, uh, twelve versus one AM, I mean, this is, I'm agnostic on. Um, just to be consistent with everyone else opening for one, I don't know how, is that a killer for you or is that okay?
No, I mean, we're planning on closing at ten. Um, I also wanna be known by eleven, so.
So.
Yeah. And I'm the one who's.
Leaving the joint, so I'm.
Yeah.
March, we have a motion.
Yeah.
There'll be, there'll be like four motions.
Yeah, well, I'll try to read it.
Thanks, Laura.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me, let me go to the audience, sorry. Can you comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to address her, I.
Obviously, congratulations, I think this is inevitable, and then obviously successful business. I am here to bring up, which was partially brought up by the elephant in the room, which is Park. Um, we're talking about a hundred people now here. Jovi with his new Malanes market has some functions that are inaccessible to people. Um, and there are, and there are, um, I still am at one Mill Warf Plaza, fifteen Mill Warf Plaza and one thirty-two Front Street, and I'm part of the condominium association, and I have been at the meetings and, you hit it on the head, there are people already, even before this is open, that are coming in at one fifteen in the morning and hollering in the parking lot. I've been told they get out on their balcony and go, shut up, you know, it's, it's late at night, these people live there. Um, the issue, Ian brings up a very good point, the issue is going to be enforcement. Unfortunately, the enforcement is gonna be that in parking lot, that everyone's going to try to access, which I would myself, because I'm not parking in Cole Parkway to go to a restaurant that's a quarter mile away, especially if it's cold or if it's rainy or if it's whatever. Issue is going to be enforcement, we already have a full lot now, and it's not even season, the marina, it's not, boats are all in. It's a situation, I bring it up because I would like to see somehow some effort, or not even effort, some goal, that we can get some off-street parking in the northern end of the harbor. Because even though we have a three hundred and fifty spot, parking lot on the other end of the harbor, realistically, if you're going to TK O'Malley's, you're not gonna park at CBS. It, it, it just, I've been there forty years and I, and I see it every day. I have employees from these places that are there every day, and it's getting to the point that, as was mentioned before, we did close the lot, and I think Anne mentioned it, we had validation so that any of those businesses that were paying rent there were validated and they parked for free or other people had to pay, and I think that's gonna happen, or the lot's gonna be closed. And I don't think that's good for anyone, to have the lot closed, I would rather see some investment made. Um, very good friends of mine live in Plymouth, and I go down and visit them occasionally. Plymouth has a lot of big lots in the town, but they also have a half a dozen satellite lots all over the place. And they actually charge, not very much, but they charge a few bucks for it. And it makes it good, because you don't have to walk from the same situation that we have here. You know, you don't have to walk a country mile to go to a restaurant, you know, if I wanna go, I wanna go to the wine bar, you know, I like wine and, uh, and enjoy their business, but I think the human nature aspect of it is that people are going to park across the street. Now, I know Dan Groom, who is the new owner of the Mill Warf, twenty-three Mill Warf Plaza, uh, he's also, this is his fifth restaurant. They're based in Naples, Florida, um, I know he has comments and I know he has experience in this, he has the same kind, they have the same kind of issues. And, uh, so from my point of view, you know what I'm saying, I don't know where we can go with this, but I think it's an investment the town is gonna have to make to make space by properties and make some off-street car.
Thanks, Laura, we hear you.
I, I appreciate that, and I know Dan wants to, uh, say a few words.
Hi, everybody, uh, I also just wanna say a, a lot of your comments, I think it's.
Just, just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, my ex-stand group, the owner of the Mill Warf Restaurant, um, twenty-three Mill Warf Plaza. Uh, just to start off, I totally support, you know, the wine bar, I think it's great and, uh, you know, love wine and think it's fantastic, and I, I am the number one believer in rising tide of Salt World, so you won't see me out of here and saying, I don't know, I want more restaurants and wine bars and retail shops to open up, because I think it's great for the town, I, I, you know, we own the warf for four weeks now and, uh, absolutely love this community in town and that's why I'm here, is because I wanna see, you know, I, I want it to be as, you know, fantastic as it can be. Um, about two weeks ago, on a relatively cold day, you know, I, I couldn't park in the lot, in, in our lot. Um, and so I parked in the public lot and walked down, and I just sat in the lot for three hours and sort of followed people as they parked, um, and there's a significant amount of people who, again, are parking in the Mill Warf lot and, and walking to other places outside of the condominium association. Um, and it, I'm not a fan of gating and stuff like that, because again, I think it's bad for the, just town, I think it's bad for us, but if our customers can't park, or our people can't park, if people can't park, you know, it, it kind of leaves us in a situation where we do have no choice but to take those measures and do enforcement and, you know, I don't wanna take a dead horse here, beat a dead horse here, but I, I, we do have businesses in other areas and I, I think that planning and providing parking that's close, it's human nature, I, I think it's important. I think it's critical for the future growth of this community, and I think it would be extraordinarily beneficial, not only to the wine bar, not only to us, but for all of the businesses and for residents in the community, because and it does get cold and it does rain and it, it does become ninety-five degrees and it's uncomfortable to walk, you know, quarter mile, half a mile in those conditions to, you know, patronize businesses, so I, I think for residents and for businesses alike, this is, you know, it would be a win-win, and I would love to, I'm happy to, you know, do whatever I can to, you know, assist or help if, if that's even possible, come up, try and come up with a solution, um, so that we don't have to take extreme measures and do things like close our lot.
Okay, I think I hear you, um, and I think the town, you know, will take it and plan, will take it and see whatever sort of parking issues that we can get from town, so, thank you for your comments, um. Any other comments, anyone in the audience? More?
I was just gonna say, um, one of the initiatives that we are looking at right now is the renovation of the old Pier Forty-four property. And I know I for one, when it comes to Corus, you know, it's out for RP right now for comeback, is that we need public parking, so we need some good additional spaces there, and I don't know if you know where that is, but say, um, look at.
Yes. I don't like fingers all the time.
All the way up to the right, so up the hill and over to the left, um, so
Yeah.
that would be what I would advocate for is to add some significant parking there as well, so it is on our radar, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, if I might, I'd like to suggest that maybe the restaurants and the businesses could help us, especially the restaurants with ballet. Um, and if you have a couple of kids running back and forth to Cole Parkway, it's not such a bad thing. Um, so, I, if, if you could be coming up with some, you know, creative thoughts about that, I think that would be helpful, um. And I'm not sure that, you know, having been in the situation for a long time, that everyone is clear on, if you're parking in the Welsh company parking lot, does that include the Welsh company, old, the old Welsh company building that we all think of? So that if you're going to the Sam's on the harbor, does that include Sam's?
It does.
Does it include the, uh?
Salt, Salt Society.
And includes Salt Society.
The toy store, it includes all of those businesses that rent and are part of that condominium, so, and the marina.
Right.
And, and he couldn't be here tonight, now the marina has a new owner, and he is even more adamant than Dan about, my people are paying a lot of money to come here to keep their boat, and they are screaming at them that they can't find a place to park, and, and do something about it, is what he said.
Well, I think with the boaters, some solution might be a drop-off location, and then they would go out to Cole Parkway, which frankly, in my opinion, has way too many trucks on it now, um.
You know, it's just, again, it's, I think it's human nature.
I know, but we don't have.
They all, they all have gear, they bring it to the boat, I see.
Well, and, and I'm saying, if you have a way of letting people drop, or they have spaces set aside just for drop-off,
Right.
have ballet parkings for some of the restaurants, including yours, um, and if they, the kids, it's all those kids have to run with the car back to Cole Parkway, well, for them, they could get to.
In, in terms of wine bar, the wine bar, excuse me, uh, Pier Forty-four is further away than Cole Parkway.
Right.
You know, that, that's a great solution, adding parking to the town, but it doesn't help the situation in the immediate northern ending harbor situation.
If I'm gonna stop, did you, we, we hear you, there's not an easy answer, right, there's not a, a vacant field with an acre of land that we can put something on, but,
No.
but I do hear, and we've talked about this in the past.
Right, we have.
Great, um, Laura, can I have a motion now?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, move to approve a common vicar's license to Vine Bar LLC located at one thirty-one Front Street pending board health inspection, um, for the hours of operation from Monday through Sunday, ten AM to twelve PM indoors, and Monday through Sunday, ten AM to ten PM outdoors.
I'm sorry, first we have the motion to approve the all alcohol restaurant liquor license. That's a separate executive action with the hours.
Okay. Oh, oh, I did common vic.
The common vic doesn't have hours.
Gotcha.
Sorry about that, there's three, uh, actually four motions.
Okay. What? More, more is it down below or above?
There's actually three motions.
All right, go ahead.
Move to approve a new all alcohol restaurant liquor license to Vine Bar LLC located at one thirty-one Front Street, hours of operation Monday through Saturday, from ten AM to twelve.
It's actually gonna be Monday through Sunday.
Monday through Sunday from ten AM through twelve.
Thank you. Twelve AM.
Twelve AM, sorry, sorry, twelve AM.
Two hours, two hours.
I know. Good night. Um.
And outdoor patio hours.
And outdoor patio hours from.
Ten AM to ten AM.
Ten AM, ten PM, contingent upon more health and the VCs.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Second, by Miss Campbell, for the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Ayes.
unanimous, five to zero?
And then Ms. Karen made the motion for the common vic, vicar's license, and I just need a second on that.
Second.
Second, by Miss Karen, for the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
And then we need the outdoor entertainment permit.
Anyone have that one?
Yep. Move to approve an annual indoor and seasonal outdoor entertainment license to Vine Bar LLC located at one thirty-one Front Street for the hours as follows. Um, with no amplified, Monday through Sunday from ten AM to twelve AM, right?
No.
Inside, inside, oh, inside.
So inside is gonna be, uh, ten AM to twelve AM.
Right, oh. Twelve AM. That's it, as noted. And, and inside we just did, right? And outdoors from. And outdoors from uh. Ten AM to ten PM with no amplification. Second.
Second, Madam Conley, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Still one more?
No, we combined, we should somewhere better.
Alright. Best of luck.
Thank you, thank you so very much. Good luck, very excited, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dan, sorry for the wait, do you wanna uh add up a little bit of, do you wanna just say Dan has?
I'll find it.
I'm next.
So just um really something enough physically you're in. Uh you wanna make sure we have everything funded that we're gonna need for the rest of the year. Which, as you know, ends June thirtieth. So we're uh have a couple of change orders for the Cedar Point project. So uh we did a small van, four hundred twenty thousand dollars for that project and also we wanna start the Dolan Field well. And we just sold the van, included that project too for forty-five thousand. So we sold it on May seventeenth. We received two bids bids for the hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And the winning bidder was the Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod at a coupon rate and net interest cost of one point seven five percent. Which is, we were thrilled that Nancy and I had bought more along the lines of three percent, so. Uh in this small van will. Will come due when that other big van we just did in February. So at that point, we'll take a look at it. And that will be due on January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And at that point, we'll take a look at it every time, see if we're gonna go around it or go it over again.
Any questions from the board? Just one quick question, these are for, these aren't change orders or anything, this is the existing project as it is. And just need a little bit more funding cash right away.
And the reason why we need cash so right away for the project, as Nina explained to you today. Is because we do, the town does have some change orders for the Cedar Point project. But we do want residents to know that this isn't in addition to anything that was voted on and authorized to add a town.
That motion? Oh wait, first, we have to read.
And the clerk has a vote to read.
Before we move it?
Yes.
Yo. A lot. I, the clerk of select board, the town decision of Massachusetts certified that at a meeting of the board held May twenty-fourth, May twenty-two. Of which meeting, all members of the board were duly notified and at which forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed. All of which appear upon the official record of the board in mind custody. Voted to approve the sale of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollar, dollar one point seven five percent general obligation bond anticipation note, otherwise known as the note. Of the town dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two and payable January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. To the Cooperative Bank of Cape Cod at par and approved interest if any. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the note, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale. And preliminary official statement dated May sixth, twenty twenty-two and a final official statement dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, being hereby ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Voted that the town treasurer and select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a C P P S disclosure. Undertaking a compliance with the S A C rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such form as may be approved by bond council. Um to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference of the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures. In such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to renew or update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the note. And to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the note collectively known as the documents. May be executed as several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file. Or by under electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a newly executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures of any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures. For the purposes of the documents, in all manner, they are truly having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer. Be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions. And execute and deliver such certificates, receipts and other documents as may be determined by them. For any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certified that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached hereto, was posted on the voting board of the town at least twenty-four hours. Before the meeting in compliance with section seven dash eleven of the town charter. I further certified the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That notice stating the place, date, time and agenda of the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes. Was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible. To the public at all hours or in on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located or applicable and of course with an alternative method. Of those prescribed or approved by the attorney general is set forth in nine forty C M R twenty-nine dash zero three. Section two B, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and the holidays prior to the time of the meeting or may so post at the time of the meeting. That no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the note were taken in executive session. All in accordance with general law, chapter thirty eight. Uh paragraphs eighteen through twenty-five as amended. hereby dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
A second? I try to propose.
Vote to approve the sale of general obligation bond anticipation note uh for one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second, Madam Conley, further discussion?
Could you read that again?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, thank you, Dan.
Thank you all, so there is some paperwork that needs to be signed tonight because it's fast moving.
Love it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got a a discussion on a vote for some new special events. The first one is N D S Football Foundation.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kaylee, I'm on the board. You have the board members Travis, Adam and Adam couldn't be here, so I've invited um some of my colleagues, this is Thomas and this is Michael.
Nice to meet you.
Here to help me, support me and.
Great, just learning.
Thomas and Michael's last name?
Thomas Woods, Michael.
Michael Stewart, how are you?
I'm sorry, Michael, what was your last name?
Stewart.
Okay, thank you.
Well, tell us about your project.
So um we are here to hopefully um. Host a fundraiser event this summer, this fundraiser event would be a memorial fundraiser. For um a former Citroen High student and coach, Michael Spinola. He was um class of two thousand and eleven and he passed away last October in a car accident. And basically. When everything had happened, I had felt a huge sense of uh support from the community. And I really wanted to give back to the community when this all was taking place and. I know that everything happened in such a quick manner, um. That not a lot of people were there to support Michael in his path when he did pass. A lot of people reached out to me and told me that they were very sad that they couldn't be there, actually, I'm sorry, I said it's over, it was November. My mind is gone, um but. They couldn't be there, it was the week of Thanksgiving and. I had thought that what a better way to not only host a memorial, but also give back to the community by making a fundraiser event. So we came together and we created a nonprofit early this year, um our nonprofit name is the N D S Football Foundation. And our entire intentions are just to hold this one event and hopefully. Um create enough revenue, we're we're hoping to hold multiple events, but we wanna create enough revenue to give back to the students. To Citroen High students for the next five years. And we'd like to give back a decent amount of money to, we would like to give two scholarships of two thousand dollars for the next five thousand years. I mean, fi- five years. Words are hard, words are hard. So basically, um what we've put together now is a pretty decent sized fundraiser, we want to hold. We we're maxing out at twenty-four teams, we've not really gotten that many to sign up yet, everything is in the air, obviously with not having. You know, approval and everything else, we're just kind of having everybody, you know, stand by. But we're we're at most hosting twenty-four teams, that would be a hundred and sixty-eight players maximum. And we have about fifty people on staff that day between volunteers and our own um organization. That would be loosely between um concessions, merchandise, um people helping to clean up. People helping to just organize where people are going throughout the day, just so everything is nice and organized. Um we already have a lot of people on board, pretty much everybody's ready to volunteer. And um we've gotten a lot of support from local organizations who are interested in this event too. Um not organizations, businesses, I should say, that want to help not only support this foundation. But also um want to be at our event to, you know, help boost their own uh business and it's just like a um. Um little co-cohabitation and basically, yeah, we're here to just get your approval.
Well, first, I wanna pass our condolences on, we all heard about it, we're all heartbroken, so we very sad, so.
Thank you.
Who's gonna do that to him? I, kids at each.
Yeah.
The the event sounds like a great idea and very generous, so all of them are on board for any questions?
I just have one.
Yeah, okay.
Um great to see you guys, I know how much work you put into putting this together, realizing how much it is. It was a great idea and you've done all of that work, so congratulations on getting it to this point. Um and I have no doubt that you'll run a great event, the only thing on the other page that we point out is. If you end up doing the cornhole or whatever it is on the games, keep it off the track.
Yeah.
It's an expensive track. That would be, yeah, I know, that would, I know you said that in your application. Um and don't be discouraged about people signing up because everyone signs up late.
Oh, yeah, we we talked.
And if you expect somebody from my house. You know, someone from my house will be calling you. Uh no, I think it's great, it's a great effort, I think we might go. It's really admirable that you can be giving back to Citroen High, we love that.
Yeah, we'd love to give it in his name, you know, as long as we can.
It's very nice to see you doing something positive in his name, my compliments.
Thank you, thank you.
I agree, it's great and um I think you'll have a lot of success, um really as well and. My condolences as well and I wish you all the best and this is gonna be great.
Thank you, great luck.
I just wanna clarify, um are are we okay to have these businesses have tents set up at the event? Um with a table with a tent above it, I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, I think a lot of that stuff is gonna be, you'll run that through the rent department.
Yeah, okay.
And make sure, I mean, I don't think you're gonna put spikes on the on the church people, but I'm sure they can tell you at places if it could go.
Right, none of that. I just wanted to clarify with you guys that we didn't need any more permits between us and the specific businesses or anything else like that.
Why don't we go to the?
Tent permits will be required by the um.
Okay.
Building department, give me your call, I'm happy to help you.
Absolutely, yep, we can get that done easy, absolutely.
It's uh just so, it's just so impressive to start by one seat, we're gonna be able to do it pulls together. I know that they're like, they target ages for, or it must be.
Yes.
I think we talked about that for a while, but.
So we're targeting an our, an age group that is generally our age group, we're between ages of twenty-five and thirty, um Michael's friend group. But generally speaking, we wanna keep it open to ages fifteen and up because we know that a lot of the Citroen High School students would be interested in something like that. That's something that's really like enthusiastic to do in the community and stuff like that and. Even just kids who have been, you know, um maybe a a not a student, um we're on the team that Mike coached for or anything. Any connection that they might have to Mike, we wanna just kind of allow that age range for, so fifteen and up, basically anybody who's in high school.
They're fast up to do it.
Yeah, yeah, depending on the turnout, if you expand that age group, you'll get with the.
Yeah.
Yeah, for this.
I I will find out like this year, you know, and obviously all of us have, we have like the people who have like titles and then there's, we have, you know.
Yeah.
Friends like, you know, me and Mike on the scenes who've done stuff, but. It's at pretty much all of our, you know, first time doing this, obviously, so I obviously we're all like proud of ourselves. Kaylee's been incredible, so it's.
I'm just trying to follow the, follow the rules and do it exactly as we can and make it as official as we can, we wanna be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, of course. Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
You've got great football talent that can host events and uh.
Right.
Uh you know, all we ask is that you take care of the turf fields and.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
That we're on land and moving there, of course.
Yeah.
And more with the rec- rent department to get all your little stuff done.
Yeah, we're talking about Mr. Devon, actually, we're, we have um plans to meet with him and go over rules and regulations for the day of the field, his expectations and all of that.
Any other questions from the board, yeah, from that Miss Burman?
Amber, by any press road, number ten. Um any fees associated with this, whether it's to rent. Field or rent the um. Whatever that is, like restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, would that, because this is a fundraiser, would that possibly be waived?
As my understanding, the direct department already voted to waive those, okay, but let's just put it down because it is very expensive. To use this facility, yes.
Yeah, so we had gotten word, we were at the meeting, that they um approved the fee waived and they had just mentioned that you guys would also have to approve that way. So. I'm not sure if that's in the jurisdiction, I mean, in, you know, that's what you guys have to do, but if we're all set with having the fee waived, we greatly appreciate it and it does help us tremendously.
Are we all comfortable with that?
Hmm, yes.
So I'm gonna walk with that motion as well, any other comments? We have a motion.
Uh move to approve a special event permit for N D S Football Foundation's flag football tournament. To be held on July second from eight AM to two PM at the Citroen High School Turf Field.
Oh, I think it says seven PM.
Seven, yeah, seven.
It says.
Oh, I searched for that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll just say it's seven, no problem.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Um so which is right?
I think it's seven, right?
We're hope, we're going for seven.
Okay, alright, well, from eight AM to seven PM at the high school turf field. And move to approve an outdoor permit for live music for a DJ from eight AM?
No, okay, so that is under, we wanna have a live DJ and music, we wouldn't have it the entire time, we'd probably start music around eleven AM. Till five-ish, we wouldn't have live music the entire time, be two hours and then DJ fill in the rest of the time.
Alright, so move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit for live music for a DJ from eleven AM to five PM on July second. And further move to waive the uh permit fee, the the field fee. Second.
Second, Madam Campfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I just appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Slap fourteen.
Sound happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Our next special event is for Saint Mary's. See, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
Miss who hosts twenty-two thousand Caroline Institute. I come before you on behalf of Saint Mary's and the Catholic Church. And I'm here in lieu of Father Matthew Conley and Father and the Christ, who would not be present tonight. Um presenting a request for a special events uh permit application and have you, have you seen the paperwork and is anything made back?
Yes. We've all done that.
We've all seen that, okay, okay, essentially this um one-time event would occur on Sunday, June nineteenth. And it would leave from the property of Saint Mary's at the end of the eleven o'clock mass, so the start would be somewhere around twelve noon. To ten past twelve. And essentially, it will be people walking in a procession. They will use sidewalks and crosswalks wherever they are. The procession is to move from the church property across that intersection. Uh down Front Street to the driveway, the.
uh down Front Street to the driveway that turns, is it is it called Wolf's Dock Street? Um, it's the one that turns um behind Jonas, not at Jonas, the next one down. The procession would continue toward the water side and then behind the north um apartments over to the bandstand. At which time, the procession would stop for about fifteen minutes. Um, they would've already set people ahead to set up a table on the bandstand. It would have a tape pop on it, um, and they wanted to say some prayers there. This is uh procession for the High Holy Day for Catholics called Corpus Christi, which translates to the body of Christ. And so to march as a group of people is something that has been done in the past and the two parish pastors are looking to bring it back to Situate. Um, essentially, it would be there about fifteen, twenty minutes at the bandstand. And then they would walk along the water's edge on the sidewalk, again, past Maria's, along the sidewalk, cross the intersection to Saint Mary's. And then they're going to meet back inside the parish center for um cookies and coffee and things like that. There will be uh at least two nurses within the procession. Um, they will be, as I said, following crosswalks and things like that and that's pretty much it.
Police, are you have any police details or?
We don't, um.
How many people do you think, is it about a hundred people, probably?
A hundred would be a quite max. I mean, I can't imagine, we has, I said, we haven't done it before, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. But you probably see, it it's kind of a spur of the moment thing too. He ever kind of wants to come outside after the mass, he follow along, can't. We weren't thinking of having anybody, but we we could, I mean, do something like that. Or we could just have some monitors, front and back, I mean, I know that would happen, actually. There would be adults in the front and back in line and we should keep them constantly at the intersection. It's just there are a lot of crystals that you're touching up there.
If you look at the comments, the police will have someone in the area or occurs. Uh, then Father Connolly believes between now and the event that it's gonna be bigger than he foresee's. That he's to get touched with such a police, it may be a detail, but right now, we'll handle it with undue personnel within the area.
So for my questions as well, um, the only other one I had is about the, what's the total time of the event? You said from like twelve to two, or?
I guess, I'm not sure why it went that wide, but it's gonna leave the church at twelve. I was mapping it out today and I was thinking that I'm back at the church no later than ten past one. So I really think, including the walk, including the stop at the bandstand, an hour, hour and ten minutes.
Great.
Total.
Any questions for the audience? If there's any further questions, I'll take a motion.
Motion? Move to approve a special event permit to Saint Mary's in the Tennessee and One Kent Street in Situate for their Corpus Christi procession to be held on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two from twelve AM till two PM.
Second, Ms. Goodman, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and good news. Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Next uh item on our agenda is an update on Memorial Day observance. On that, on that. John, are you?
So we're back. Uh, that's the good news, um, after two years, so um, everything seems to be going well. Uh, everyone picked up from two years ago. That's not the books. And um, went around today, um, DTW's harder work as usual. Um, and the whole town looking nice again. And just a a quick public announcement too, we're getting a lot of calls about the flags on graves right now. They're like, there's no flag. This is what they do every year, they they bring all the old flags in, um, they mow, they trim. And then in the next few days, you're gonna put out, in Tidworth and Union, they're gonna put out all the brand new flags, so they'll all be Christy. The uh Scout BSA Troop Seven, um, I started Saturday with them, Saturday morning. Um, they went out, they did um two uh cemeteries already. And this week, they're gonna finish the other two. So they'll all be completed. So if anyone has any questions, they can still call my office, uh, seven eight one five four five eight seven one five. And um, but that that's what's going on now.
Just with the flags, in the past, we've had volunteers doing it. You're all saying you don't need volunteers, the troops got it.
Yeah, they they they're really good. They uh, like I said, I met them Saturday morning, they were energetic. Uh, so they, like I said, they they'll they'll get it done. I had an update with them on uh Monday and the scout master, and he said, yeah, everything's going well and they should get those completed this week, so. So as far as the um procession and and what's gonna go on, um, it's this, it's the same as we've done in the in the past, but uh I'll I'll just go over real quick. Um, so the Harper Master, down at the Harper Masters office, um, at eight AM, they're gonna do that. They're kind of a small ceremony that they go out from there at eight AM to uh throw the uh, the wreath for those that, um, lost lives at sea. Um, that dedication, uh weather permitting, like this, right now, it looks like it's gonna be okay, um, so that's good. Um, and then after that, um, and if anyone has any questions on that particular um ceremony, you could uh get in touch with the commander, um, at situatepostonefortyfour dot O. Um, and they they can fill you in on that. Again, it's a small crew, so it's not um the public, unless they have their own votes and and follow it. It's it's really hard to uh welcome to be a part of that. Um, after that, if what will go on is um, all the organizations that are gonna march in the parade um should be forming up in front of the town hall here, anywhere between ten and ten thirty. Um, ten thirty, again, will, sharp, will step off, have the procession parade right up First Parish Road to the common. Um, and then once everyone's in there, generally around eleven fifteen, we'd like to get the uh ceremony going. And we'll have the the normal ceremony on the common end, um, with the bands. And and we have the keynote speaker, uh, Mr. Kelly, um, was able to get us a keynote speaker, uh, Colonel uh Berantino. Uh, he's the commander of the first, uh, fifty-first troop command. Um, he's coming up from Rhode Island, so uh thanks to Joe, Mr. Kelly, um, for doing that. So he'll be our keynote speaker and um, you know, other speakers that will be there. And and uh, uh, reading of the names, um, of that have passed since last um Memorial Day and then our our uh flag ceremony, so. And uh, so yeah, it we, you know, it's gonna be the same. We we hope uh we get everything wrapped up around one, one ten, so. If everything um goes well, so.
Any questions from the board?
I actually did, um, would you ever consider reading the names of those who passed during the time when we could not do it in person instead of just since the last Memorial Day?
We, the first time, uh, actually, Mr. Kelly's one that uh brought this up and and we thought it was a great, uh, great day to do. Um, the first one we actually did, um, teach, Mr. Kelly was up there for a while, he read everyone. And then next, so going forward, that's what we did. So we've, we've recognized those and then now it's because of time and everything else, we just do it from Memorial Day, Memorial Day. But the first ori- original one, um, yeah, we did that.
No, I was thinking from the time when we couldn't go in person, the COVID years.
The last two, uh, actually, they did it when they did the chair of honor last year.
Oh, all right.
That was when all the hockey team came up and, yeah.
That was great, okay, yeah.
So it wasn't, it wasn't missed, yeah. But I mean, and that's the other thing too, if anyone's out there and and unfortunately, for some reason, their, you know, their level was not read, by all means, call my office, we'll put them on the list and and have them recognized. But, you know, it's um, we have to use a list through the census and what we have. Um, sometimes names do fall through, we don't know, but we don't need it on purpose and all's that to do is call the office and we will recognize them the next year.
I'm sorry, could I just clarify something for the minute, so I'm sorry. Uh, you said the parade will step off at ten AM sharp, proceed down First Parish Road, Lost and Common.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, okay, that's all, okay. I heard the timing, ten thirty, that's what I wanna make sure, thank you. And the ceremony will begin at eleven fifteen?
Right around there, yeah, we tried, we tried to see the last string, let's kinda come onto the common then.
And in the event of, whether the ceremony will be held there?
So that, you, right now, I I would say, because I didn't, we haven't talked to the school. I mean, I would love to have it in the the back over there, but I think that would be a great area. Um, that's on my agenda to talk to them this week, just in case. Right now, the weather looks nice, so I'm kind of hoping. But if in a pinch, we could go right over to the guard hall, um, if if I don't get that approved this week. But I think that would be a great uh setting over there if it was cool and comfortable with the weather, so.
So it'll be determined by the end of the week?
Yeah, but that's um, that's like priority on my.
Sorry, thank you, I see.
Nope, just thank you, it's one of my favorite events, so if you all could put it together, we'd like to.
Great, thanks, Josh. Any questions?
Um, I just have one question.
Just your name, what's the address?
Um, Suzanne, I agree, you briefly said the First Parish Road. Um, since it hasn't happened for a few years, can we clarify what time the roads will be shut down? Like, at what point they'll start to shut down the roads?
So I I uh, I've already been in contact with uh Chief Thompson, we've been discussing also uh Taylor Billings, Oscar Billings. Uh, we went over the route, it's the same route, um, we're gonna leave, the the road will pretty much be open all the way up to the point of um, the parade stepping off at ten thirty and then they'll they'll um block off um, countryway right here. And then as we get up to Rodney Jones, they'll block those two side roads until the parade passes, those will open back up. And then as we get onto the common, the only road that would be blocked off would be right in the common there, First Parish going down. But be the damn all that's gonna be open, you'd be all down the country, but just that that section will happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or have a motion, or do you even have a motion?
No, just an update.
Great.
And then John wants to know who will, who will be the select one speaker? Who will be the speaker, as a general?
I can say.
Okay.
Uh, no, that's, that's, yeah, it was.
What, they have?
And the public is welcome to attend.
Absolutely.
Line the parade room. Countdown to the end of the commons. It really isn't one of the several.
The big flag will fly.
Yes, it will.
Well, the big, the big flag.
Yeah, I have, uh.
On the ladder truck, right?
Yeah. Chief, Chief Murphy's uh looking at that. He's gonna let them know. I don't think it's gonna get any worse.
Great. So my next, thank you, Don. The next uh item on our agenda is presentation to discuss and vote with John Lee, our Memorial Project, Mr. Chappelli.
Yes.
And is there any more?
John Sheen is gonna represent it, would you go?
Great.
This is uh Joe Connors, John's brother. We have a team.
Yeah, you can pull up, Jafar, grab this one over here, who's on? Yeah, Joe, you can pull up the chairman, whatever you guys, thank you.
Okay, um, the council met with uh, uh, John's, the Moritz, it's like uh, uh, for the, and the council of veterans, the Veterans Abidation, right? Six. And uh, we were just pulling away with the presentation, I'm sure your folks will also. Uh, so we came to a unanimous conclusion that we highly recommend that this vote through in honor of uh, the John Connors, um, all stuff here. So, I'll take it away.
So before you do that, can you just introduce everybody and just give me your name, um, and your affiliation, if you want, we start using.
Uh, hello, my name is Kieran O'Shaughnessy, I'm the director of construction and I live in Franklin, Massachusetts.
I'm Joe Mitchell, I'm a resident of Westfield, Massachusetts, actually a family property here at Situate. And I am the treasurer.
Hi, I'm Joe Connors Junior, uh, I'm a family member of the Connors family. Uh, and I used to live in Situate, no longer, but I'm in the state of Massachusetts.
And I'm Joe Sheen, um, I'm on the executive committee as well, uh, director of fundraising, uh, and wing of, wing of president.
Great, and before you get started, tell us what you need to, but just know that we all have the whole presentation.
Yep.
We've all written the whole thing, so you don't need to go slide by slide, but certainly hit all the major points.
Understood. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you all for uh having us here before you. Um, we wanna be respectful of the time, as you said, Mr. Chair, so um, we wanna keep it conversational and um, but we we will go through the slides quickly, just to um hit all I know.
Yeah, I don't wanna speed, I just want you to know that we've, that's our track.
Understood, yeah, thank you, sir. Um, so I, as I said, I'm Joe Mitchell, I was a classmate of John Connors. Thank you, I didn't know that. Um, I worked at Polytech and and we graduated together in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, I was Air Force ROTC and John was Navy. I was commissioned on the same day we went into the uh, into the Navy SEALs. The uh executive director of this group, uh, is Mr. Tom Capelletti, who couldn't be with us tonight. I guess Ford showed us in the school, so he's working. Um, he's, he was uh my deputy commander at Air Force ROTC and it's been his mission uh to get this project moved forward, taken thirty years. And we're um, we're off to a pretty good start, I think. Um, we've been working on this for about a year and a half. We've been in front of your town administrators, Mr. Ludo was uh very helpful. We've also been in front of the Veterans Abidation Council. And um, they've been supportive, they gave us advice and they gave us direction, and now we're in front of you. Um, and we wanna share with you um, a little bit about John Connors, who is a Situate native. Uh, he led an extraordinary life, you know, albeit brief. Uh, we'd like to share with you, you know, his accomplishments, uh, what he stood for, and um, how he's inspired others and um, how we'd like to memorialize him, you know, and others uh here in Situate. Uh, next slide, please. And this is the mission of this group, of the John Connors Memorial Project. And um, as as you can read, it's, it's memorializes him, but others as well. And we appreciate the fact that Situate has um really taken um, uh, put quite a bit of effort into recognizing veterans and and folks who have, um, you know, gone above and beyond. I'd like now turn over to my colleague, K O.
Uh, next slide, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I started wrong.
Okay, the first one. Uh, so as I said, I am Joe Connors Junior. Uh, this kind of is a description of my family, but my family got moved here originally in uh June nineteen sixty-three. Moved down to Pentfield Road, up by Elm Street, you're probably familiar with it if you guys have been here for a while. It's about thirteen homes, thirteen or fourteen homes. And so that, in the early sixties is when they kind of initially developed that whole subdivision. So all the families that moved down there, including us, we were all young families and there was plenty of kids, you know, uh, plenty of kids in the neighborhood, uh, Connor's family, we had five, and my family. Uh, my sister Joan Marie, my sister Julie, my brother Robert, uh, and then my youngest brother, John Martin. So John was the one in March twenty-eight, nineteen sixty-four, when we were residents of Pentfield Road. So he uh, you know, attended all the Situate schools. He went to uh, was it Mrs. Murphy's Free uh preschool, uh, down on the, uh, by the old library, if anyone recalls that. He went to Central School, we all went to Central School, which, you know, it's all the schools, you know. Uh, and then he was off to Gates Elementary School. And in at Central School, he had a great, great uh time there. It was Mr. Renella who really instilled a lot of competitive spirit in John. He did well academically and and that was really pushed by Mr. Mr. Renella, uh, to compete and to do well academically. And then continued to pursue that, and he went off to uh VC High. But our family were, you know, were regulars in Situate for up until the mid, mid eighties. So we were, John did everything with Situate, uh, youth football, youth sports, uh, hockey, soccer. And really, in Situate, he developed a love of soccer, which he continued on at Boston College High School and and thereafter uh until his death in nineteen eighty-nine. But uh, he did, as I say, went up to Boston College High School. He did well, stayed well there academically. He was a member of the Homeric Academy, which is a Greek studies program. His junior year, he did four months abroad in in Spain, in La Colonia. So by the time he.
Next slide, please.
By the time he had sent it, finished uh high school, he was fluent in Spanish. Uh, had a great understanding of Greek, ancient Greek. And then he went off to uh Worcester Polytech. And as Joe stated, he went to Worcester Polytech on a NROTC scholarship. So that scholarship uh allowed him to attend Worcester Polytechnical School. He originally was a Marine Corps option, but then he heard about the Navy SEALs and he decided that that's what he wanted to do. He truly wanted to be a US Navy SEAL. He thought that was uh a very challenging career, you know, it was, it was a challenging job. And he wanted to be with that, and so he he strive for that and he went to graduate from Worcester Polytech in nineteen eighty-seven. And while at Worcester Polytech, it's noted in in one of the slides, he he did also attend University of Arkham, Arkham, which is in German, so then he did a junior abroad while he was at Worcester Polytech. Uh, he studied chemical engineering. Uh, he studied chemical engineering, which his degree was, uh, awarded at W P I. He'd also studied out of Germany, in German, so by the end of his college career, he was fluent in Greek, uh, Spanish, and German. Uh, so, and then, in.
Next slide.
Uh, before you leave that slide, could you just go back to that one second, just to give you a feel, because you're gonna see John pictured heroically coming up. Um, and I knew John, uh, the first day of B C High until his death. To get a, a feel for who he is on that American Academy bottom right, uh, John is in the back row all the way to the, to the right. He was the smallest, I think he was the third or fourth smallest kid in the class four hundred. Um, the other picture, part of school tutoring, shows some tutoring, um, children in the Columbia Point Housing Project, which at the time was the Second World Housing Project in the United States, next to Chicago. And he did that, it was a service requirement at B C High, which I did it with him, but he did it before it was required and after the requirement, which is, uh, John. Sorry, Joe.
So.
Next slide.
Next slide. This kind of highlights, you know, athletically what he did athletically, but then the, the next slide also highlights his leadership role. Uh, he was a leader by example with the, uh, the SEAL team, uh. And, and at this point, I'm just gonna read, uh, kind of from the citation that was awarded to him. Uh, he was killed, September twentieth nineteen eighty-nine.
Next.
Uh, while the U S SEAL team was, just, just caused, you may recall that in eighty-nine when they went down to take on Noriega. So, their, their responsibility was to take on the battalion air force, uh, airbase. And to disable Noriega's, uh, personal plane. And so, and that encounter is when he was killed in action. So, uh, sooner or after, the Secretary of Navy, the President of the United States, awarded him the Silver Star and the, uh, Purple Heart. So, just reading briefly from that, which I think is attached in, in the slide as well. When a fierce engagement, uh, with Pan American Defense Forces inflicted, heavy casualties on the lead SEAL platoon. Lieutenant Connors, in the face of enemy fire, led his squad in a counterattack to suppress enemy fire and to cover the movement of his wounded teammates to a safe area. With full knowledge of the present danger, he inspired his fellow platoon members by directing fire and aggressively firing his weapon into enemy positions. While leading his men, Lieutenant Connors was mortally wounded by enemy automatic weapons fire. His heroic leadership saved lives, helped minimize further casualties. Lieutenant Connors' courageous actions, personal sacrifices, and his dedication to duty reflected great credit upon himself for keeping the highest tradition of the United States Navy Service. So, uh, you know, that's kind of a quick summary of who he was and why it's related to Situate. And then why we believe that, you know, uh, he was an exemplary athlete scholar and then obviously, uh, killed in action, was, uh, was awarded service then, you know, representing, uh, Situate as well as, you know, Massachusetts and the Connors family. So, I'm gonna move on to John, I've got, I've got a couple of stories to watch on to you.
I can go to the next slide. Um, so before I just talk about Chaz, it's two things, uh, James Golladay, uh, was under John's command, uh, at, um, on the day of the invasion with Emma. And he put together like a two-minute YouTube clip, and we thought it was probably, um, uh, would be pressed for time, so they didn't, uh, link it to show today. But it really gives you a good idea of how impossible the mission that they were sent to, under no cover, to shoot out Noriega's plane between two secondary schools, under the rules of engagement, that they were not to fire, because they didn't want to put the kids in danger. They had no cover and, uh, immediately the four platoons in front, the four people in front of the platoon in front of John's were mowed down. And that's when John stepped up and fired his rocket launcher to suppress the fire. But that's a good video and explains a lot about the actual military operation James put in, he's a very powerful speaker, uh, and, and on our executive committee. The second thing was, um, just briefly, when Mrs. Connors called me the night that John was killed and said that, it was September twentieth, she called and said John's been killed in action, I said, that's not possible. I talked to him that week, who's in, uh, supposedly was, uh, in Walter Reed Hospital, undergoing experimental treatments for an infection he picked up called jungle training in Brazil. But he, uh, found that, he found out about the invasion, he checked himself out, showed up at his commanding office from a grass death, and said, my people are gone, I'm gone. So, those stories, uh, and many others would, would share the, not that he, not, not that we should celebrate him more than we celebrate other people. Uh, I think Mr. Kelly's son, Michael, or any other person that's given him the ultimate sacrifice, it's just that that, it is such a powerful example of, of heroism that, that, that people can aspire to, and it's inspirational. So, to try to capture that vision, we engaged on our board, Chaz Bagby, who's a National Engraving, um, Sculptor. And Chaz has done some of these works, represented the era, the works, he's, he's, um, Yale-educated, self-trained artist. He's done, uh, many commissions, many historical commissions, the ones he's probably most proud of, President Reagan in the rotunda, the Capitol Building. Rosa Parks, uh, he did in the National Cathedral. And Neil Armstrong, which is unforgettable, and that's, uh, a good, uh, statue to, to look at the concept, because he gets inspired and he tries to relate his surroundings into the statues. And he has Neil Armstrong Young, has a boy, uh, sitting on a, a, a wall, like a retaining wall, and then as you approach the college building, he has, um, Neil Armstrong as he was when he made the Moonland, it's powerful. So, Chaz is fully on board, very strong supporter. I don't know if he's able to come in, but actually, so the next slide, please. So, in order to, to get Chaz more inspired, um, we, uh, had Tom, I think, and K O and Joe, had great, uh, with great effort, got a Navy, um, serviceman from Annapolis, uh, to about John's size and age and weight, to model for some sketches for, uh, for him. And, uh, we researched heavily the period gear, everything that's on John that's in the statue is what he was wearing that day. And I think the Veterans Committee commented that they were appreciative, that it was, uh, accurate representation. Even though one of our, uh, not to any Situate group, but someone commented, said that's not possible, you, you should have done a better job of, uh, getting the accurate, uh, gear on him, because it's too heavy. And, uh, the person was incorrect, it was a military person, they were incorrect, it's exactly what he was wearing and substantial. And it was, he was the strength man in his platoon, so he was carrying about a hundred pounds of, uh, gear that day. Um, and I think we can go to the next, uh, statue, so, uh, Chaz's further concept is, and again, this is a work in progress, uh, depending on where, uh, the site is chosen, it has to blend in with, and it's also represented on the board. But, um, where the site is, it's gotta blend in to the, to the envi, to the environment. But Chaz tried to capture the granite block that showed, um, uh, kind of water and motion, uh, that's why he's standing on that, coming out of the ocean at, at T, uh, Air Force Base, and then that's John, and he's, uh, sort of, he's, he's in motion, he's moving forward, he's leading his men. And that was, uh, Chaz's, uh, concept.
And I'll turn it over to K O, we'll talk a little more about some of the technical details of site prep.
Next slide, please. Again, my name is Kieran O'Shaughnessy, everyone refers to me by my nickname, K O. That's who the mysterious K O is. Uh, Tom Capletti, our Executive Director, he, he called me a year and a half ago. He said, he told me the whole story about John Connors. He said, I don't know anything about construction, I don't know anything about statues, um, can he help? I go, I'm in, what do you need? So, uh, the first thing I did was I called up a very good client and colleague of mine, uh, Michael White, uh, of Simeo Design, he's a landscape architect. We've been working together for the past ten years, uh, he's an incredible designer. He works really well with, with teams of owners, architects, engineers, and builders. Uh, he's incredibly talented, he works on municipal projects, uh, high-end residential projects, and also, uh, corporate spaces. He has an incredible ability to find out that special part of our project and, and feature it. Next slide, please. The next slide just shows that, uh, Michael and his design staff will work. Uh, when we design a project, after we find out where it's going to be, it'll incorporate brick, granite, seating areas, lots of landscaping, lighting, et cetera. And this is a process that we will do, uh, in conjunction and many, many meetings with the town of Situate. We're not walking into this project and walking into town saying, this is what we're doing. We're going to be sitting down with everyone and saying, this is what we've been thinking about, what do you think? Uh, would you like to do this, would you like to do that? We're not walking in and saying, this is what we're doing. Um, next slide, please. Timeline, how long will all of this take? Uh, once we get to go ahead, nineteen to twenty-two months total. Nine to twelve months to create the formal landscape, construction drawings, specifications, and bid documents. Again, that includes the town of Situate, uh, and many, many meetings with the town. Two months to request bids from contractors, eight months for construction, so a total of nineteen to twenty-two months. When we met with the Veterans Advisory Council, we told them that we had included in our construction budget eighteen months of maintenance. They said to us when we met with them, I told them that eighteen months is typical for a municipal project, that's what you do for maintenance. And they said, is there any way you can do more? And we said, sure, we can do it in perpetuity, is that good enough? So, what we'll do is we'll raise enough money so that we can put money in a fund for the town of Situate. And that'll pay for mowing, weeding, uh, mulching, et cetera, in perpetuity. So, um, that, that won't be an issue, so the town won't even have to worry about maintenance. Estimated budget, next slide, please. How much will all this cost? So, I'll break it down very quickly, um, into a couple categories. Administration, we're all volunteers, we've already created a, a, a website, a GoFundMe page, we have an administrative assistant. Um, we're all volunteers, the landscape architect, Michael White, is volunteering all of his time, um, which is pretty good. Uh, construction, so administration is eleven thousand, general conditions.
And we are five oh one C three, by the way.
Correct, thanks, Joe. Um, so administration, eleven thousand. Uh, next item, construction, general conditions, hundred and seventy-three thousand. That's basically all the things that go into a project before you put a shovel in the ground, so permits, fees, engineering, et cetera. Next item, bronze statue, two hundred and fifty thousand, that includes everything for the statue, fabrication, delivery, installation. Next item, large item, site work, two hundred and twenty thousand, um, excavation, landscaping, et cetera. Last item, concrete base, carved granite pedestal, ninety-six thousand. For total estimated, uh, cost, budget of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, everything is estimated right now, as soon as we know exactly where the project is going, we'll be able to define to them. But I've been doing this for thirty-seven years, and I'd say that's a very accurate estimate. Uh, next slide, please.
Uh, so, I'll take this, K O, fundraising, uh, our goal is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, as K O said, we have a website, um, GoFundMe, we're five oh one C three. I, um, we just got that about a month, a little over a month ago. I was on, um, the phone fidelity today to make sure that we can use donor advised funds as well, the IRS just updated there. Uh, there's a little lag between when you get your five oh one C three to when the IRS updates the database, but that's available and social media, social media, email marketing, uh, corporate donations and foundations. Um, we don't under, you know, underestimate the task involved, uh, but Joe and I have, are on the board, uh, we're, um, we've raised scholarships to send people from B C High on John's, um, John's memory, and I think we're just going to go for thirty young, uh, kids from B C High at this point. And that's going on, so, um, we continue, we'll lean on some, some of those people to. Next slide.
Suppose I can talk to this, um, so there's, um, you've heard the story, uh, there are a number of especially military-related groups that are very supportive. And we are networking with them and, and working with them, we're promoting their cause and they're promoting ours. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the team, you've met most of us. Next slide, um, so shortly after, um, John's death, um, there was a Reader's Digest article, uh, you can still Google and see how there's, it's pretty, um, pretty compelling.
It's powerful.
And next slide, uh, we appreciate your time, and there's this record document, you can look at it at your leisure, and we welcome your questions.
Great, thank you very much, great presentation, clearly a brave and, you know, amazing person, so, uh, I'll, I know, I think we all probably have a few questions on the same day, but I'll, uh, I'll, you want to start us off? Okay. So, I guess our, my thoughts, the first thing that came to me was, where do you want to put it? What's it gonna, you know, how big is it gonna be, and what's kind of the concept in terms of a memorial for him and all so, soldiers and generals? So, those are the three things, the first things that came to my head.
And, um, so we're, we're here to listen, uh, there were some, uh, suggestions posed out of the Veterans Advisory Council. I, I don't want to speak too, I don't want to, you know, taint the audience, but, no, we want to work with the town, and you all live here and you all are elected officials, no, and, and the volunteers and the appointed people and the Veterans Advisory Council, no, where do you think, and then we can start a conversation.
What sort of space do you think you need?
Uh, so, that's a very good question, um, so, it all depends on, so, a minimum, ten thousand, ten thousand square feet. And I, when I say minimum, I guess the town could say, this is the largest place that we can give you, and it, whatever it is, X, we'll work with X. But it could be ten thousand square feet, quarter acre, half an acre, whatever the town is available, we'll work with what you have. In terms of the size, this is just an initial concept to get things started, because everyone always said, what's it gonna look like, how big is it gonna be? That particular rendering there, which is not the final version, because we, everyone on board with it, that particular one has bronze at seven feet, the stone at six feet, and then the pedestal at a foot and a half.
So, about fourteen feet.
Correct, correct, yep, so fourteen and a half feet, so that, that's, that's an example, but, um.
So, not only the size of the statue itself, but what, I mean, you're talking about quarter acre of land. Right, what do you, what do you foresee the vision of the?
So, uh, it could, it could have, um, again, it can be any space, it doesn't have to be a quarter acre, it can, can be anything. Um, it would have benches, it would have uplighting, it would have landscape fe, features. Uh, it would have, uh, granite seat walls, bronze plaques, et cetera. Um, and in terms of other things, the, the Veterans Advisory Council asked us about that also, they, they said, you know, the town of Situate really wants to have an honor roll wall. I've worked on projects on honor roll walls with cities and towns, I've done many large ones. Um, those projects just, so first of all, yes, we are, we could definitely incorporate that, like, next to our project. So, if we had, um, this particular, say, the, the memorial, it could be, uh, that could be installed. My point is that, uh, an honor roll wall typically takes two to three years, because usually it takes a year or a year and a half to gather all the names. So, while the names are being gathered, we could work on this project, and then we could, we'd be more than happy to sit down with the city and figure out where the honor roll would go, so that the two projects are similarly all.
Do you have any, I mean, you must have some sense, I mean, maybe the fam, does the family have it? I mean, it looks like it's kind of a small pocket mark, like we have in, in some areas of town, you have any sense it would be meaningful to the family personally?
Uh, I, I can't really say that, no, I mean, really, the town of Situate, I moved right down to Pentfield Road and, and, you know, we were, we're kind of working to get to the two schools, you know, but I mean, I know they have a cemetery, a cathedral, room for that there, you know. But, uh, I do, I think that's where the vets all go, don't they, at least?
Yeah. Well, I'll get you one here. So, if you can just explain to us, how is it a memorial for, for him as well as, like, what, what's the concept of the memorial itself?
And so, um, we're talking about with John being, you know, scholar, athlete, and, and citizen, you know, embodies, you know, what we want, we, a lot of us aspire to be. And I think by incorporating that, you know, with the memorial wall, it's, it's embodying, um, you know, these greater. it's embodying, you know, these greater concepts that you want to be, you know, through John, someone who's actually done it, inspiring others and as a way of reflection. I'm not, I'm not an English major, so I don't know why I said that question.
Thanks, John. Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to open up to you guys, just this one point. Is this memorial the John Connor's memorial? Or is this the, some sort of veterans memorial with John Connor's name on it? Know what I'm saying?
Right, sorry. I think I can answer that question pretty good.
If you wanted, yeah, either.
Yeah. So Paul, I'm playing, one of the two parts, Justice Cushing, I like, I'm also a veterans advisory committee. So for military statuary, what we were talking about doing for appropriateness is every statue has to be the likeness of somebody. You know, the sculptors carving the likeness of somebody. So this is very good and accurate representation of John when he was on Just Cause. So the operation Just Cause. But so that's, that's good. What we want to do is incorporate a wall of honor eventually into that and have the initial focus be the statue of John. But it's not a, like a park area just for him. But it would be included all, Sons and Daughters of Situate have lost their lives in battle. And, but you have that as, you know, as the initial statue as you go in. It's, it's John, it's his likeness. But he's also, as a son of Situate, he's a good represent, good for representation of the town. So it wouldn't be a, a John Connor's overall memorial park. It would be a park for all veterans. But his statue of him is there and, but we felt that would be appropriate.
I think that's great, but is that what you guys want?
Yeah, a hundred percent, yes. He just said it, he just said it. Since he's a veteran, he said it way better than us.
Okay, I'm going to stop talking. Karen, just go ahead.
Yeah, this is monumental, right? So my question would be, are we willing to work with the town based on the site and based on the dimensions that would be proper? Rather than, I mean, trying to find a space in town for something that monumental might be difficult. On the other hand, it strikes me, we've got, we're calling it the Gate School campus right now. And we've got a certain amount of property there. Let's leave out the fact that the Cudworth house is there. But we've got the veterans memorial gym. And there is a wall there that perhaps a wall of honor could be done. But I think the scale of this is quite large. And maybe if it would be, if you could scale it down and/or perhaps, I mean, we honor Chief Justice Cushing in town. And we've got, they call it the Daleen plaque because it was sculpted by a famous sculptor. And that honors Chief Justice Cushing in our town. So I guess my overall question would be, would you be willing to work with the town on a design that would be appropriate to what is frankly, an extremely inspiring story that I never heard? And so I think it's really a wonderful way to exemplify this bravery of this young man. But I think a lot of people would like to see it in a larger context, including, you know, Mr. Kelly's son and quite a few others who-
So the, sorry, the answer to your question is a hundred percent yes. Nothing is finalized. This is, this is all to work with the town of Situate. So we're happy to look at whatever sites are possible. The site that you mentioned is, is one that the Veterans Advisory Council had mentioned to us when we got our meeting. We're willing to look at anything and-
See, to me, it's a space in need of more care, more attention. It's near the Cudworth Cemetery. It's near the common where we honor the others. So I think, you know, just in my mind, that would be a wonderful place. And if we can, you know, figure out what the appropriate design needs to be.
Karen, Joe?
Yeah.
Can't just flip you two off.
Thank you guys for coming and for bringing the stories to our attention. I think the proposal that you've laid out, it covers, there's a lot of work to be done. But you've anticipated what that work is to be done. You did the very first appropriate step, talking to our veterans committee, which we're very fortunate to have stayed in this committee. So I have no doubt that you have laid the groundwork to do the process that needs to be done. But we've had some board conversations about how to memorialize, do that sort of thing. I am confident that we can incorporate the steps that we want to engage the community. I don't think the five of us or the rest of the community should make this decision for the community. But it's time to, there's a lot of time before we get to that point before we would, you know, make sure that the wider community is aware of how important this monument is. So I really support that. And I really am touched that you would bring them home. I think, I think you really explained the importance of this kind of monument in our community. And especially right now, it's a great time to have those conversations and to show that example to our young people. So thank you.
Actually, we have a big thank you that Jim would grow because we met with him first on Zoom. And then he, he said he should really speak to the Veterans Advisory Council. So Jim, thanks for pointing us in the right direction.
I guess I'm trying to get a sense, and I know we're talking, it's a greater conversation for the whole community. But I was struck. It's often for these memorials are we focused on his bravery that happened or his life? We're focusing on his life. And I'm going through the PowerPoint, and there's so much about highlighting his life in Situate versus sometimes when you are somber, sober, reflective or meditated type of memorial. I guess I'm trying to get the sense of what would be more acceptable from the family? Are we here to celebrate his life or talk about his tragic death? And I say that, and sometimes I'm much more myopic about this, about my grandson saying, you should be like that guy. And that's a different kind of conversation because it's going to be placed in a different place. You could be Pier Forty-four or some other type of place where my kid's saying, this is why. He went to school like you did, he went to Gates just like you did. And talking to him about his life versus memorial type wall and how that's going to be kind of portrayed as, you know, a much more, it's a different experience. And I guess I'm just trying to see what, even for the veterans committee to understand what do we want that experience to be for our community? I don't have an answer to that, again, I'm too close to it. My family, again, we opened it up. But I just didn't know as family members what we're trying to highlight because of this obvious, his vitality came through.
Well, I mean, I think the statue itself, with, you know, it's only represented about him at the time with December twentieth, nineteen eighty-nine, you know. So, but, but I think that celebrates him. That's who we want to be. I mean, that's, that was his goal, you know. And when he got there and, you know, with the guys that he was with survived and they were so proud of him because his gun was empty, you know. But he was truly inspired to be a U.S. Navy SEAL and he was driven to do it. So I think that was, I mean, he was, he was brilliant kid. He was an athletic kid. He can speak many languages. As John said, he was down, down in Brazil doing jungle warfare. Learned Portuguese down there, you know. So, but this was his peak, his life. So I think it kind of celebrates both, you know. This was that him at his peak, you know. And this is where he wanted to be and this is what he wanted to do. And, you know, and he just, he had these lesions up and down his arm. He's in the hospital, he had an interminus. And he's like, I gotta go. Rips them out, checks out and off he goes. So he wanted to be there. So I think it celebrates both. I mean, I think it shows, you know, who he was at the strongest point. But also, you know, what we also told him about him is that's how we got there. That's why he was there, because he could do these things and he could lead the men to that position.
I think Andrew, I think Andrew, you raised some very good points. And even though I've never met John, his story is really pretty incredible. So incorporating his story into this project, as many of you have already said, it's pretty impressive. We are a hundred percent on board with including that into the project. We've brought it so far so that we could have a conversation about it. And this is as far as we've been able to bring it because we've been working on the fundraising and the website and all these things.
So, you know, I think there's a video that I think was posted on my website, correct?
Yeah, we'll send the link.
So, so take, if you have a minute, go on and look at it. So James Galvey, I didn't know who the heck he was until a year ago, you know, when these guys, they found him and they introduced me to him. So he was an enlisted officer that was serving under John when they attacked Panama, you know. And so he was, and so since that time, he, he went to the U.S. Naval Academy, got his degree. He went back to, I think it was commissioned, yeah, it was commissioned as an officer. We got to go back to SEAL training, do it all over again as an officer.
Second time in hell, we came to it twice.
You know, so now he teaches at the Naval Academy. But he's an inspiring guy, but he says a lot of the things he's done in his life were inspired by the leadership that John wanted to show him when he was his leader.
If I may, Mr. Goodrich, I think, no, as you talk about whether it be in a place more of a memorial with those who have passed or somewhere down at Pier Forty-four as a conversation starter with kids. That's a great, I mean, we're open to that. I mean, having conversations and, and with the community and where should this go? And what should it say? Or what should the online meeting be? This is step one, and that's why I've heard here.
I understand your question because like this is the same, you know, that is a snapshot of somebody that tutored kids at the Denver School, worked for charity, right? The kids aren't going to look at that and know all the intricacies of, of his personality. But maybe they can read an article and find out more. But I would say that that was, that was the pinnacle, that was the proudest moment of his life of being a U.S. Navy SEAL and a member of the team, just to go back to the fact that, I think even he would probably say this is too much to single him out versus other veterans who've paid the ultimate sacrifice at their team days, their humble. So something that more incorporates that. It's just that, you know, Chaz was so, the artist was so inspired by reading the story that, you know, probably created this larger than life image. But he's very much a person, you know.
I don't have any questions. Just, you know, really, the honor that we consider bringing him back to Situate because as a couple of folks have said, and I know Karen brought it here, I do not. But I have a couple of friends who are Navy SEALs and they don't know the story, which is amazing. And I think it's, you know, really important to honor him here. I'm going to refer to our Veterans Advisory Council and, you know, maybe yourself. Maybe we put together a small group to really talk about, you know, where is that best location to honor him and, and those others that have served in similar vein, right? But I, I agree with Andrew. I think the story is really important if we, if we want us to make sure that that resonates in however we do and can move forward with this. So I don't know what the next step is. But if it's to form some kind of joint committee to, to move forward, we certainly have my support. But again, I would defer to our advisory, our Veterans Advisory Council a lot on this because, you know what, you know, what's appropriate, what's inappropriate.
Yeah, I just, I think the threshold we have to go over first is, this will be for the veterans committee. Is it this, which there's multiple places where this could go, this memorial could go? Or is it the memorial then surrounded later by a larger wall of honor, whatever we envision, in which place it's a lot more space? And the number of places we could put it now or not, right? So this, can you put this on the common? Probably. Do you want to put this and a wall and a bunch of other stuff on the common? Maybe not. So I think that's a threshold that the veterans committee has to say. This is beyond just the memorial, this is what we envisioned. And then we say, okay, take this, where can that go size-wise? And we want to put it someplace where it's going to be visible, where schoolchildren will go by, people will walk by, people will see it. But the, the more encompassing it is, the fewer places we would have to put it.
I'll try and summarize it. It sounds like you have the support of the board to proceed. But we, from my own perspective, I can't tell you what you want this to be. You know, we're not qualified enough to say it should go there, or it should go there, or it should go there. I think maybe the veterans committee can talk about their vision of what they want to be memorials in town. And you have to inject your own as well. And then I would say, come back with us, we could help, we could get other people involved in terms of options of places to put it. And then we'll, we'll take it from there and give you our feedback from that. Does that sound, sound like, oh, I mean, I think conceptually, we love the idea. We love the idea, I think, that Mr. Kelly talked about, about expanding it and making it, you know, bigger than just that. Clearly, the architecture stuff that's going around is pretty impressive as well. But the wall isn't included in this, is that really something that is our next step? You know, so conversations with Kim and the rest of the committee.
Well, the Legion's been pushing for that.
Yeah.
The American Legion.
But so-
Beyond a wall.
So maybe we incorporate the site like Jim was saying and something like that. But it looks great, you know, tell us what we can do to help. But, you know, I think you need to kind of formulate what the rest of the plan is. And then we can actually look at what town or where we can put it on. Because we're only thinking about the three places that come to, come to our mind. You may say, hey, there's a spot right on the street we used to live on, right? That, that would mean a lot more to me or-
Agony Beach.
Yeah, right.
Again, sort of get that and say, well, that would fit almost perfectly down at the park next to the Runway with a lot of children playing. Right, that would, that would go there. Would the memorial and a wall of honor go there? Might be a little too tight for that.
Yes.
So I guess that, once we decide, it doesn't have to happen all at once. We can do the memorial and then do the rest of it later. But we want to make sure we put, if we're going to do all the other items around it, we want to make sure we put it someplace where it's not just going to be, you know, you don't want the wall circling around the memorial, there's no space for-
And a place where people can easily get to.
Right.
So Joe, can I task you with kind of being a liaison with this and trying to figure out what the bigger picture is? And then maybe coming back to us in however much time you need and saying, okay, here's, here's where we are. And you guys can communicate through that committee and-
I, I think the purpose of this meeting was to let them know if they can move forward. Is, is Situate going to accept this concept? You know, obviously, once we find all little details, you know, no sense of going any further if you guys aren't on board.
Right.
So that's why we're here.
I think you got that support tonight, you know, with the concept, we don't know where, you know.
Right.
But conceptually, I think we're on, we support it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so conceptually, we're all heading in one direction, just, but procedurally, would it be, depends on what piece of space, would go in front of the park and rec committee? Or the school department? Or is the authority at this board or, or that table?
Yeah, I mean, it would take around six months.
It'll come to us, it'll come to us eventually. If it's on school property, then we would engage the school committee as well.
Right.
Jim knows what parcels we have. So I'm going to guess your group will communicate with Jim and they'll say, you're going to find how much space you need.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at school property. The school's having a policy against memorials. Because eventually, you know, who do you say no to?
Right, yeah.
You know, little Jamie, little Johnny, and they don't want the schools to be memorials, right? Yeah, so, you know, I have some ideas, but it's not dependent whether it's this or bigger. We, we can find some really good places, just like, you know, how much kind of space you need. And then eventually it's this board.
I have one more. So one thing that, that we often do is forget about, we, we look at a silo. So we're looking at this as a veterans and that. But I think to Mr. Goodrich's point, the story of your brother's life and his, his, the impact that story can have in our community, this is a major investment, which we're very, you know, honored that you would bring to our community, that we need to also make sure that we are having conversations in this pipeline with the arts department in our school, with the, with the curriculum leaders in our school to, you know, when this thing goes up, it's going to be big. And it should incorporate more of a con-
And it should incorporate more of a convers- a community conversation. I also think that will enhance the support for putting and understanding of this kind of tribute. So let's not forget that in the whole conversation of veterans, in the context of veterans, because, I mean, just the artwork alone is a whole conversation.
Well, you know, we agree, I mean, the whole point of it is to recognize what you did. If nobody knows the story, then what's the point? And it's taken 32 years to get to this point. And by the way, we have to see the long list of dignitaries that we already know are coming to the dedication, whatever and whatever it is. It's, when you look at the extra reference material, take a long list of the generals and joint chiefs of staff, if they're all, when you look at the, the reference pages, you'll see they're, they're all 100% on this.
One great talent.
I was going to say.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, there's, yeah, there's, this is wonderful.
One last comment is.
Just a quick question, would the final, like, approval for this project overall, would that go to the town for a vote, or would that happen through the appropriate town committee?
Come through us. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Unless of course you want to buy town later, if you find a place to put it up in, which is an out of the question. I mean, you may say, we want to buy this one right here, and then obviously anything like that. Sketching. They're like trying to figure out what time. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much.
We're going to try.
The ladies is the all-around. Right. Skipping me. No, skipping. She's okay.
It might be.
Vision two.
That's why I'm sharing this on my. Okay, I'll make a lot more sense.
So I just wanted to bring to your attention, I sent you the ladies, this for all today, which is within our.
What is this used to?
It's not a day one, it's one day.
Yeah. Great. It's actually made to call it to more. This is.
She's part of.
She's a member of this.
To do these two.
And she was five or six. All right, thank you.
Okay, so we're H20 on the new revised two. And this is a discussion vote on a new Keter bartender services licenses for H Coal Club. And you are L.
I am L, L Jarvis, yep, I live at 22 Mathieu Road in March, Old North Street. So H Coal Club is a new Keter to the market. I've been in the United States advertising industry for 24 years. I grew up in South Shore and.
You're not old enough to be anywhere for 24 years.
Yeah, no, since I was 14, since I was 14 years old, student ice cream. So I grew up in the South Shore. Pandemic pushed me back home, I made three culinary experiences all over the country, working for myself since 2014, actually, all of the relatives in 2014. So the H Coal Club is an homage to my great uncle, my uncle, and H Coal is actually lifted from his lobster grand and tour, which I turned into my logo. So all of our events and experiences that we cater here are a taste of place, an homage to our bounty here in the South Shore. I am registered at the American Legion, who has 108 from the commercial kitchen in Cohasset, I'm also organized by the Board of Health here in Situip. I have applied for a state liquor license with truly all encompassing for catering. But until that is approved in the next six to 10 weeks, I'm looking to pull a one-day permit for graduation to Lucky Pin and a one-day permit for fundraising event at Malini's at the Indian.
Okay, and just tell us a little bit about your experience. What do you do, what, what kind of?
Sure, so we're a caterer, and what I do is create experiences that are very heavily scheduled and food and beverage. So we take people, I partnered with a local lobsterman who has a six-pack captain's license. We take them on lobster charters. I do a full plan make for them. We teach them about what's happening with our local legislations within the fishing community. I'm doing a series called Fish Tales of the Ladies that will highlight sort of the forgotten history of our foodways here in Situip. We're doing a dinner on Irish mawstane and seaweed about the North and South River watershed. So there are culinary experiences that are very steeped in the history of the South Shore. Historically, before this, before the pandemic pushed me back home, I consulted for great brands like Marriott on culinary experiences all over the country and Europe.
Thank you.
I, I'm a little confused though about, so you're, you're getting your 12C.
So the 12C, I, is, I've applied for the 12C catering license. It takes six to 10 weeks for it to be approved.
So, but you want. But you want a one-day one, one license before you get that.
Just for one day, for a one-day permit at Lucky Pin for graduation party to be able to afford while impending the 12C license. It's, it's, would be the same as if one of your preferred three rivers that are arguing with us that have to pull one day or a ten-day summer in town. I'm just asking for one day until the 12C is. You can go to www.hcoalclub.com and grab those tickets.
So are you a private caterer for an, an event?
Yes.
You just said tickets, so if anyone coming to do the lobster.
Yep, so the event at Lucky Pin is a private graduation party. So I just want to pull a one-day program permit to be able to afford to their private people at the Lucky Pin Cafe. The event at Malini's is a fundraiser for SHADLE, which is the social alliance for gay and lesbian use, and that's ticketed. So even if I did have my 12C license, I would still be sitting before you at the board to ask for one day for a permit to be able to go set it, because it's technically open to the public.
And is that your general business model, is the ticket? Or the, I want to have a party, I'm going to cater?
We do both.
You do both?
Yep. We do both under the, the same umbrella.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I don't know, any questions from anybody else?
Not got a motion.
Move to approve L Jarvis of H Coal Club 98 Summer Street Cohasset. To add it to the approved town of Situip Caterer broadening their list. Also move to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to L Jarvis of H Coal Club 98 Summer Street Cohasset for event Malini's Harborside. Eight out in place on June 23rd, 2022, from 6 till 9 P.M. And also move to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to L Jarvis of H Coal Club 98 Summer Street Cohasset for event at Lucky Pin Cafe, 206 Front Street, from 7 until 10, yeah.
And what's your can?
Date here, all liquor.
We're just going to add to the event Malini's that it's an all-alcohol?
Oh, all alcohol, sorry, I didn't get that. And what's the date of the, there's no date for the Lucky Pin?
Six.
23, 64?
64 is the.
Oh, oh, it's on here, okay, sorry, it wasn't on the motion. For as amended, as amended. Second.
Did you get all that right?
Yep.
Who's second, Karen?
Karen.
I lost it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Wait, you.
That's me, I'll talk to you soon.
How many people are on the table? We have a couple dozen, or?
We have quite a few, I'd have to round it, let's see, maybe 15.
I guess it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it just.
Honestly, it's, it's a great service, you know? I like that we get their insurance and we have a good process in place for managing it. We've taken some off, and everybody's honor is huge for you. There's only, it's good that we have someone else that's going to have a stake here anyways, because that's really important to a lot of people. I'm so excited about the addition of her.
No, I think, I just had no idea if we had 200 people on the list or if we had more than 100.
No, it's on, it's on one sheet now, four would you want to have all week? I'm most comfortable without this one.
Right, we have a discussion vote to award a contract for a street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. Nancy?
I have all, after the lovely discussion about the pitch rise and inspiring story, I have this. And I did want to discuss the thanks of previous speakers on that they have left their picture here, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for noting it, so that they can leave without it. This is a competitively bid contract through the Mass Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, you're familiar with them, we do a lot of contracts with them annually. This is one that had never been awarded. It's with WL French, and it's for the disposable streets sweeping and catch basin cleanings, which you may or may not know are hazardous materials. So they have, there has to be a whole contracting. So they had the, the bid with the NA PC for $39.75 per ton, so we'd like to pop on board that contract. I can't tell you a not-to-exceed amount because it depends, if you have a storm, we do more basin, catch basin cleaning, we don't, not so much. So I don't have a dog volume, just a unit price for you on that one.
Any questions? What, what do we pay before this, you know?
We were doing it, I don't know the exact cost, we were doing it through construction for the pickup, but now with the change of custody, it's becoming more difficult.
Is it comparable?
Yeah.
And then it says here for storm stuff, but it's actually for regular maintenance, right? It's the same group that will go down and just do, do streets regularly?
Yeah, when we, when we street sweep ourselves, we have to do something with the items that we gather. And this, they'll come and take those meetings.
Oh, so they're not doing the scooping, are they doing the, they're just disposing of the stuff?
That's a separate contract that we have with TruAbster, the NA PC for the scooping. This is just the.
So this is a scooping.
Disposing of.
On the scale, all right, can I have a motion, please?
Move that this life board award a contract that pays $39.75 per ton to WL French Excavating Corporation for the disposal of street sweepings and catch basin cleanings, including any subsequent available extensions.
Second?
Second.
On Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
That's because this expires in like four weeks, and there's an exemption that'll get sent up here.
Now we have some other disposal of sludge cake.
Sludge cake, our favorite discussion, sludge cake. This, there was a competitive bid issued by the Sewer Department for the disposal of sludge cake, which is a byproduct of the process of the treatment of the effluent. There were six persons or entities that picked up the bid, only one bid, which was special disposal, and they're the current holders of the contract now for the town. The price went from $125 a ton to $172 a ton, which was not unexpected. They, their contract expired in January, and we, they refused to renew because they were operating thus at a loss at their prior rate. So we had a short-term interim contract that Jim signed for less than $50,000, which was reported to you, or we could do the SEAL process to get a new contract in place. So even if this were to go back out to bid, it's unlikely that we will get any other bids other than special disposal. They did put some terms on their bid, which the town is rejecting, which is part of your motion, and the lender is aware of that and concurred with that.
Questions?
I think that's interesting.
What do you think is interesting?
Well, that's what, that, well, no, that, you know, I've never seen us do a motion rejecting the contractor's amendment without, do we have any sort of like sign-off from them?
Well, she just said they accept.
Right, did they give it to you already? I'm just curious.
Oh, I have it as an email chain, I tried to get them to do something different with their bid submission form, but it was already this in bid submission form, so we did talk to town council about this, because otherwise we would have to reject all bids and go back out. And we have no contract in place to remove the sludge cake.
So I hate when we only get one bid and we have to go with that. You don't think that there's any chance of getting any more bids? Because the industry is.
The, the, the cost to dispose of this is so expensive. And one of the other bidders that took it out was the company that we just awarded another contractor, which was WL French, and they chose not to bid. They took out the information, but chose not to come back. So I mean, you, within your rights, if you decide not to award and they can go back out to bid, I don't know that you will, that any of these people will come back and now respond to it.
Meanwhile, stuff is piled up.
Yes, well, the, the South Shore disposal has been our provider for several years because it tends to be either the lowest bidder, but more likely the only bidder. I think the last time this went out, they were the only bidder as well. And so there's not a lot of call for disposal of sludge cake in there for.
What is the, what is the term?
The term would be one year, and it could be extended, but it's unlikely that they will be willing to extend with the way the prices are going.
More questions, kind of motion?
I mean, there's, there's companies from Canada and Florida, right?
Yes.
There's no business going on.
Three of the people that, that requested the bids were actually like listeners that just wanted to get so they could post it themselves. Only two other companies that were involved in this kind of work.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve contract 22-SS-03 with the rejection of the contractor's amendment to the bid submission form.
Second by?
Second.
This can't be all, all in favor?
Aye.
All in.
I apologize, that's probably the worst motion ever made.
Serves your purpose, it's okay.
Serves its purpose tonight.
All right, now we are on, back to the old business, which is the discussion and vote of the senior center news spots. Linda Ays? For you?
I'm a lone man. We make the lines, all right?
So I would tell you this, we have read it, we have all the changes, you don't have to start from scratch, but give us a quick summary of.
Right, I can, I have to review it with your suggested changes, of course. You wanted maybe a mention of the mission or a more clear language regarding the objective expression and allowing for outsiders with the bill, so I added that, I hope, effectively on page three, include the policy written out. Talking about internal use as well as community group use, and then also our intent to allow when able, if in keeping with, with permission and to serve the community, if those purposes are in fact appropriate for that.
We want her to go through it, because you guys are not, you want to talk about.
I'm fine. Okay, we're back to, we've got just one section that I added. A little stronger language regarding setup of furnishings, which I've done, I've added it both to the request form, and we would take care of that anyway, it's just now visible. And also in the user regulations regarding furniture setup. And for the most part, it is even better if we do the setup, so we discuss it beforehand, if we know ahead of time that someone would rather have our new custodian take it out, or, you know, get the help that we need to do that. Discuss whether or not it should be put back, or whether we could do that. Entertainment clarification, classical permit acquaintance, so both on the request form. And then again on page eight, this would comment since that, and I mean, I'm not married to any of the timing, if we want to end. If the senior center were to do an outdoor, you know, we, we might like to do something at the end of the summer, let's say, a community event or a game, outdoor games and some music. We would probably do that till seven or eight o'clock at night, so if that's okay, or if that's something that we'd always have to visit you to be. We would probably do that till seven or eight o'clock at night, so if that's okay, or if that's something that we'd always have to visit you to be able to do, or would it be the same as what we are suggesting here?
I think you'd need an entertainment license.
Yeah, anytime.
Yeah.
Always needed a liquor license, always needed an outdoor, only outdoor to take.
Okay.
So even on the patio, like, well?
Even on the patio, it's outdoor.
So, for instance, we, wasn't really mine, but we did that veterans', you know, we hosted the veterans' luncheon last November, and they had the, whoever shows up the ends, you know, with the food pantry, it was lovely, it was outside, it was from three to four or five o'clock. Um, we did too bad, so now I would don't.
Yeah, good entertainment.
So it's not different if it's part of this application, if someone was trying to use the building for their own purposes. For end times, I think that's being requested here, so in other words, maybe it's not just finished at nine, they want people out of the building and people have to go on by nine.
Who wants that?
Well, these are the suggestions that we received, and so I can follow those.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, my own opinion is, it's not gonna be a regular occurrence.
Right.
Like, this is not a, this isn't a rec hall that we're renting out, if it, if you have one event that goes till ten, probably not the end of the world, but, but we're gonna hear about it.
Yes.
So we want to make sure that
You will, you will know that.
that it would be hosted special, so that the neighbor would know that it was going on, and then the town, then the board would vote on whether it's, you know.
I mean, we hosted an event two weeks ago, um, two weeks ago, you know, it was a dinner, so six to eight, it was, I mean, I really did have to push them out the door. Um, they do that, I mean, I was, but it was a lovely event, and it was sort of hard for them to say goodnight, so that happened, so.
Yeah, the best part of it.
Most people get to know it.
Yes.
Just can't abuse it.
I get clarification, so when you mentioned the, um, Veterans Day, you know, and there were people outside, they were handing out things, are we saying that the senior center has to come to this board for permission to do that?
No, for entertainment, entertainment.
The music, music, well, and what was the music? I, I think I love before it started.
Oh, that's A, um, the, the, who shows up the end, the W S U, they are a group of, um, bluegrass, like, um, there's a few such people in there.
Alright, so, so let me, with the library, for example, if they do outdoor entertainment, they still have to come to this board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure that we're not applying some rules to this group versus some rules to another group, just, okay.
Thank you. So, just for asking if it's a public or private type of event, if they're inviting the public in, if there's a restriction on the number, and or if it's a private event, and knowing what the number of attendings is, that's in red now on the request form, so you can see that. So, all in all, I'm comfortable moving forward with the types of events that I've already been doing, I mean, staffing becomes the issue, so it's not going to happen enough, well, we don't have the resources to do that anyway, and I think generally speaking, if we have something, someone needs to be in the building. Um, unless it's something that does recur, some of the meetings I can allow at night, they know the routine, either I've set it up, I've unlocked the doors automatically, they know, and I'm comfortable with that, but for other more social events, for private events, I think somebody should, you know. There's some concern if there is a private event and there is use of the kitchen requested, you know, that's, that's time consuming, where Fred might have to go through and train, or that's where the list comes in, the approved caterer or attending list, so that, the more often that someone is used, they are, we are more comfortable with that. Um, and whether or not he can even do any of those events is really kind of a question to do this other, but you know, there's the payment consideration, and he doesn't have a lot of extra time for that either, so.
All right. Did you?
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, just to what you just said, so are you saying that we're going to limit the use of the kitchen to either Fred and your staff, or the approved caterers list?
So.
Okay, I like that idea.
And so in that time here.
It's a lot more of a big investment in that kitchen?
Yes.
That, that anybody should be allowed to do.
Okay. Um.
Did you have a question on what you're talking about, Karen or?
No, no, go ahead, finish. Right, I think I must have.
Karen?
Um, just to cut two things, um, looking, I'm a little confused, on the proposed fee structure. You list all the fees, and then the bottom, there's an hourly rate. And what take, it says community basic twenty-five dollars an hour, not a bill, not.
Oh, that was for, well, I guess that was the suggestion that we need, even if we're not charging, um, a rental fee, that they should pay a custodian fee, maybe I shouldn't have said that.
Hmm, so that's basically, uh.
Oh, yeah, because I was just an overhead, um, because it's, this town, the town meeting is no fee.
Right.
But if, so, so if a nonprofit says, oh, I want to use the pegging room for three hours, they're gonna pay a hundred dollars, and they're gonna pay fifty dollars an hour?
I think that is if we were not charging anything, should make that clear, I guess.
Yeah, I was, this, it confused me, if I got this, I'd be like, I don't.
Well, I did just add that, and I guess maybe I much, custodial fee, um, for nonprofits.
Karen, before you make that change, I, I think we have to be very, um, aware of the fact that we're not, we're not doing this where it's gonna cost us time or energy. So if a group is gonna come in and they want to reformat the roof, it's not your job to get there early to put the chairs back where they're supposed to go, you know, you've got to have it set up so that it's really a turnkey situation. If they want to do it, they gotta do it.
Yeah.
Get it back or pay somebody to come in and fix it. This is not, you know, this is, is not an extra burden of your team to do, and I, like Laura was mentioning, same concern about the kitchen. You know, we don't want Fred going in there to make lunch the next day and it being a mess, or stuff being moved, or, you know, so we really have to, you know, this isn't a commercial venture here, this is, you know, there's special events that need a space to go, that this happens to work out for, but, um, I think, and, and the, the hundred dollar deposit, you know, that's, that's not gonna pay for anything, that's not gonna pay for the doorstop that they break on the other door, so we've gotta, you know, we just have to think about that, and.
I agree.
Um, you know, I, I.
I'm, I'm a little leery, I'm a little reserved to vote, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it does need supervision, I don't think we can just say, okay, hey, Tony's gonna have a, you know, literally, a literally
He's present, right? Yeah, right.
party there, and, you know, lock the door when you're done. Um, so I think we gotta get some structure around who's supervising, who's in charge, and who's paying for it.
Right. I, I guess I'm thinking even if for six months, if I'm getting requests, I can send a weekly spreadsheet, have a, a meeting with the rest of the administrative staff that's been doing this, and just see if this is what we want to continue to do, or what it would take your time, or whether I can, we can say yes to most of it, because maybe you can't. I mean, we are ready to do, um, the Rotary Club's pancake breakfast for the second year, that was a, that was a mammoth undertaking, that was the first thing we did, and they would like to do it again, that's in August. I mean, that's, that's a lot. Um, I think they will cook outside, because they don't want to really ruin the kitchen with pancake batter, and they might.
I mean, day stuff is a little bit different, because you're in there and you're kind of overseeing it from what's going on, but the night stuff, I mean, you won't have to work crazy hours, and you're a short staff as it is now, so.
No, no, no. So I don't really see how that's going to work to that extent, unless, um.
Well, do we then limit it to just, you know, daytime events, and nighttime ones have to come before us, because, you know, why should this be on Linda?
Well, I don't think you want to have every single request at night come up for you, where they, Linda has the, the body of the custodian's building.
Well, I think outside of committees, you know, things like that.
She has to have the ability to say, hey, look, I just can't snap, sorry, can't, can't do it, can't snap.
And there's other places that they can work, Garhale, Maritime Center.
Which are, which are bad for that, so I, I like the, the ability to use the space
Yes.
for special events, but we don't want, you know, every weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, somebody booking that thing out to do something, it would appreciate the building, and it will, oh, you know, it'll be a lot of work for somebody.
It'll appreciate the building, the only other, um, resource I have to go to is, um, potentially a couple of techs work off, senior people who I could train, who would be the ones that I would have step in when I couldn't do it, or.
Well, we'd set up a revolving account, we'd charge the people, and you take that money and pay, I mean, again, it's, this isn't another thing on your job description, this is, you want to use the space, you've got to pay somebody to come and supervise. You know, just like any other, any other thing.
So I think it would be quite limited, really, and I'm not sure, you know, will it?
No, when you start getting the requests, and then this is beyond the scope that we want to do, or this is more.
Right, maybe limited to one a month if that's, um, unless it's town-based, I mean, there are things that, veterans, and the Rotary Club, and some things that, the ones that we've done this year have all been worth of, like, whatever.
You know, I, I totally agree, but I think coming back to this mission statement, and the building is so important, because it's gonna really, I think, weed out some of those other grants that are gonna kind of stop that, and I think, we might be the worst users after nine, uh, some of those communities that are there, um, that, that we don't want, the, the Roadwork Club, we don't want it to be that, coming back to that mission, I think it's critical, but it's been here now, so.
Good.
Perfect.
Yeah, I would suggest that just the way the schools make you pay custodian, keep the building open. We could, we could make it so that somebody would be an on-site supervisor, and they get paid out of that revolving fund, and that, you know, they report to you in terms of, is it set up, that they do all that work, that they do all the setup, that they do all the making sure that everything's done, and then it's just, we just add it on to whatever fee and charge it to each person. And it's, it's a nice job for someone.
Okay.
I'm not doing that.
So the, the kitchen, I really think we have to figure out what we want to do with the kitchen.
Yeah.
Um, I'm really nervous, it's, it's a, a nice kitchen, and we use it every day, I really just aim for.
So A, it's not available for use unto itself, so people have called about commercial use of the kitchen, and I said, we don't do that. The veterans' event, they, um, brought in the Voyage staff and owner, so they came, met with us and talked to Fred and knew their way around the kitchen.
Fred was there, too.
Not that, no, no, he spoke to them beforehand, and then the policeman's luncheon was also done by someone who has worked in the kitchens and actually knew Fred, but, so he came in a few times and got the label hand, so we were comfortable with that. That's what would have to happen.
I am more comfortable, I mean, you have a great venue, you can drift in. Obsessive, but then the kitchen is not, the, the mission statement of the center is not to be a catering place.
Yes.
This is not what was ever meant to happen, totally fine with saying no, because it's not, and all we're just doing with all these other venues, so that the town owns, it releases out other people that they can use.
Yes, and otherwise, I think, um, sometimes people have just asked, they'll bring food in, they'll just have to take it apart, plate it, you know, put it on trays, and they.
Some cookies, sure. Like it.
I think you have to be, you've got to be the gatekeeper of it, and you've got to, you've got to say yes or no, if it starts, if you start letting the people use the kitchen, and it turns into a mess, then we have to shut it off.
Utensils will go missing, I mean.
Yeah.
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 No, I haven't.
So do we feel that we, that, again, I don't want to publish these policies, and all of a sudden someone comes back and says,
It says here.
Yeah, it says here, I can do this, do we, are we ready to approve these, or?
Do we have anything in here that says, you know, so, you know, there's a discretion, you know, lies with.
So, sure.
That's what I tried to put in that, that first part.
That's wrong, so that's wrong.
Yeah, I did see it too, it's a.
That we can reach out any.
Yeah, it's not a, it's.
Is it in the beginning, Linda?
Yes, the proposed policy paragraphs, um, made available to town's central department personnel, other uses of the facility by community groups may be possible when it doesn't interfere. Um, this is in alignment with I wish to wipe the benefits, designated rooms may be available for private use or rental during hours that the senior center is not open, but, and I bracketed type of event, will be limited to purposes that are appropriate for the facility and keeping with our mission to serve the community.
Well, I think it's the last sentence, yeah, sole discretion.
And I think it's.
And the sole discretion of the director of town hall.
Yes. Um, Mr. Twitter, we did receive a letter today around three from Suzanne Green this year.
Two letters each, Steve.
Pardon?
Two letters each, two letters.
Oh, sorry, I only saw one.
One was Jen, and one was Suzanne.
I saw Suzanne's.
Well, why don't we let Suzanne summarize hers?
Yep.
And then.
Just state, Randy, or Suzanne, okay. Uh, Suzanne Green, three, three, seven, first parish room, um, I mean, all I really did was, you know, I looked through it, um, you know, just marked up some consistency in wording, you know, where it might have been listed a certain way for, say, noise in one way and then not another, it was really just kind of making sure things are very consistent and clear. Um, just had a couple of questions, you know, where there was, um, I guess looking through it, um, you know, it was based on reading through the whole thing, so the first one, um, said, en- entertainment indoor or outdoor? I, um, just entertainment, maybe said it to the.
I'm sorry, could you just tell us where you are?
Uh, I'm sorry, page one, page one.
Are they going to filter this every page?
No, no, I, I was just gonna say, you know, I was making comments to make it consistent, so that's what the, the commentary was that I sent in the PDF.
So why don't we do this, so you're, uh, Linda, maybe you could take a look at her comments and see, is there any, the, the entertainment I know you're concerned about, is there any other big picture thing you want to mention real quick, or?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I mean, really what I was doing was I was looking at some similar properties, you know, with entertainment, where they do require people to kind of start shutting down, not at the point at which they're supposed to be out, but about a half hour before that's where things start to line down and get stocked and cleaned up so they can eat out, um, instead of the point of being out of building, um, and really just, I'd say the rest of it was really, like I said, cleaning up, being consistent, um, making sure the wording is very specific, because sometimes a word can make a big difference, and how things are perceived, um, um, so, and then just a couple additional compliance items, just requests, you know, just for, you know, noise and, um, you know, making sure people are only going where they're supposed to, not wandering, you know, say if they're on the first floor, wandering up to the second floor, because it was listed on one page, but then it wasn't put in the, um, compliance policy, um,
I'll tell you what, I don't need to go, we'll, we'll look at them all, and we'll, we'll get, we can tighten up a little bit.
Things like that. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I do want to just say this overall, our intention is to be a good neighbor, right?
Yeah.
We do not want to, uh, you know, burden, I will say this, there are going to be occasions where there's an event there
Oh, yeah.
that goes, you, you know, that goes to ten o'clock at night or something, um, it will not be consistent, but our, our intention is to, to not make that a real function facility, but knowing that it is a public building, and there will occasionally be stuff that goes on.
All right, I mean, I absolutely thought this draft was great.
Good.
Uh, there were so many things added that were, I thought were absolutely wonderful, um, probably a lot of things that came up at the last one. Um, it was really, it, it's, you know, like, anything you look at it too long, you don't look at it anymore, so, just, you know.
Well, thank you for your feedback. Uh, Karen, was there anything you wanted to add to the other one? I didn't see.
No, I just, I just had the other, I was the same concern, if you're gonna have a, you know, a sunset at nine o'clock, then perhaps it should be, then it's maybe at thirty, same kind of idea.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure, or maybe, maybe you shut it down at nine and nine thirty, so. Well.
It'll be very tense.
So can I make the suggestion that we don't finalize this tonight, and that you kind of take our feedback, and, um, and talk to the staff, and, and look at Suzanne's stuff, and just make the document. In the meantime, is that your discretion?
Yeah, so I can realize it, not privately, but we'll continue to fashion like that.
Yeah. Okay.
Delegation time.
Yep.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks a lot, Joe.
My pleasure. All right, so that's listening.
Right on time.
Doing a great job.
It's a time zone here.
All right, so new business, do we, I, can I have a motion for a one-day wine, wine, wine and malt license?
We have this law for one-day wine and malt licenses to Family Press Caviar for an event at the Central Maritime Center on June fifth, twenty twenty-two, from six PM until ten PM. And Black Caviar for an event at the Central Maritime Center on May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, from four PM to eight PM.
Second?
Second.
By Ms. Campfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. How about a special vote to step the date for, uh, the fall special meeting, town meeting?
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Campfield.
Is this profoundly early yet?
Yes.
Why is it profoundly early?
Well, we really need to make a decision on the placement of the water treatment plant.
Okay. Have we, okay, so my concerns. Go ahead.
No, you're gonna say the same thing, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
You have to.
So my concerns are, we need to have a plan to present to the public to get their input before we get to town meeting.
Yep.
Are we gonna have time to do that?
Yes.
You're sure of that?
So we should be doing the survey next week or still, Andrew, right, we're gonna have a survey, it's gonna go out to people about the water treatment plant, questions about that. Uh, we worked on it this week, and then after that, we will roll out, uh, look at all the different options for the water treatment plant, could go, might go, uh, pros and cons, and that'll be able to, people they can click on and say, this is a good spot. There's no frontage, there's no blah, 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 I'm ready to go, and there's a time bond, who's the, I can't remember, Weston, Sam.
Uh, Weston.
Time bond, it's a total H plus.
Woodward.
Woodward, Woodward and Carr. Oh, and there'll be, you know, we'll have each, things like that also.
Yeah, the neighbors very much want to have a public, you know, come in, come meet and agree discussion. Um, the other is.
Am I missing something? Am I missing anything, Andrew?
The other is, there's, I can't, I mean, I'll ask Mr. Goodrich about this, the, there, there's no way that there'll be a CPC application for Pier forty-four to be renewed by then.
No.
No. All right, so then now that would be pushed off for April?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, this is an arbitrary date, uh, we could make this October, we could make this November. There's no reason why it has to be September.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we, we need to get going on where that plant's gonna go, so we can actually get into the actual design of the plant on the site.
Right, but two or three weeks isn't gonna be the end of the world, if, if we think we're not gonna be prepared by September. I mean, September seemed very early.
Well, I.
Yeah, a couple of weeks, the end of the world, no, October, November, yeah, that's getting problematic.
Well, how many is September nineteenth?
October third.
This is October.
October third.
Couple of weeks won't buy us a beer for a court discussion.
The, the other dates, try to review what we have to accelerate, but when do we get the elections in the, there's two elections in the hall.
We just get to have.
We also have a time, you have a primary election in September and the final election in November, that you're also working on.
Right, and you're dodging, um, veterans day and, um, month's day.
It's a moment, actually, it'd be a moment more close than, uh, it'd be.
No. We'll open it the next meeting and close with the meeting after that.
So two weeks.
Yep, gonna be, uh, yeah, four months.
Lot to be assessed among.
Yep.
And this is based on the construction schedule issue?
This is based on a lot of different things, including, um, the state revolving fund, getting our applications for that, uh, getting the plant design, trying to meet the, all the requirements of the state. But we need to get, we're kind of spinning our wheels right now, we're gonna do some more piloting. Uh, part of the project was, as we were moving along, we were gonna move the pilot from where it is now up to near the reservoir and pilot the reservoir water also, just to be on the safe side. Uh, what we've decided to do is we're gonna keep the pilot going, we're gonna tank the water from the reservoir down to the pilot site and pilot it there, so we don't have to lift everything up and try to find a place to put it and do all that work, so once we're doing that, we find the desire of the plant to make sure, can the ragoons be a little smaller, can we do this, can we do that? Uh, based on the two different water qualities, but if we wanna read our schedules and get this plant started, we need to get the site done, so we can say, okay, this is the site, now design the plant, this is the treatment, how's that fit in the site?
I think you're hearing that we think it's quick, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to get all the educational stuff out to that group in that time period.
I'm confident that Andrew will have it all done and out.
Very much.
We, we have a schedule, we'll try to get that done. I thought you were.
Do you wanna hold off on this?
October seventeenth will be the next day. That's a matter.
The Clean Water Trust has already chatted in about the fact that we are on the twenty twenty-two plan for fifteen million, we can't spend fifteen million in twenty twenty-two.
Right, so we're gonna have to ask and put that off in twenty twenty-three.
Regardless of these two dates.
All right. Regardless of the, the, yes, area inform that were this six months delayed because of the addition to that, of that vote, of this lineage.
Right, but the, the September nineteenth and October seventeenth really can be met back, it's still gonna have to get pushed out, right?
That's, that's the push down, I understand.
What, what does the town meeting vote mean? Is it binding?
Now, the, the article that passed in the spring town meeting said that the town had to come back to town meeting to vote on the site. That's what it said.
I think we get our act together in, in September, because I think that, you know, deadlines are a wonderful thing in that regard, um.
You doing anything this summer?
You know what, there's nothing more important than a service to our community.
She says from a boat.
I can work for my own soul.
I'm actually not concerned about the water treatment information again yet, I mean, a lot of that story they gathered, and I'm not really concerned about that.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned about, I mean, I don't wanna put Pier forty-four off for another year.
Would, would that even be ready?
Well, it's two weeks of timing and not asked, because the RFP just went out.
Well, the goal was for last fall, but the RFP went out this week, so since our meeting took so long, yeah. And then with other goals to do for the fall, whether we get the RFP done in December, when this board originally asked us to be done, then, uh, would have been. Um, so yeah, the, the goal was for this fall.
Could you, would you say, get ready for October seventeen, or?
I don't, I mean, literally it went out, like yesterday.
We have to get it back, yeah.
We're gonna get it back in thirty days.
And then they need time for hearings and public designs, et cetera.
Well, we can always do a, a second.
I mean, you're setting it out, so if he's not, like, should try to be, to get.
So what if we didn't decide, what if we didn't decide tonight? If you want, if, do you need a couple of weeks to see if it's possible to get yours done a month later?
Well, you have to back into the course maybe.
Syracuse City.
Why, why wouldn't we consider having a second special town just to make Jim crazy and watch his head explode?
Well, you might pick camping down on the beach.
It's not gonna be Jim's, it's expensive. It's gonna be camping and who's head exploding.
Yeah.
No, I was just, circling back to the, the, um, Pier forty-four, that's a design contract, so it's out for a month, it comes back, you've evaluated, you say six weeks, we know you award contract. That's got like three phases in the RFP of public hearings and design concepts and costing. That's not gonna happen a month, that's gonna happen a number of period months, I would think.
But, so you're, so you're saying we're looking at the spring anyway?
I, I'm, I'm just trying to run it through my mind realistically, I mean, I, I don't think that's something that you wanted to rush on your design side, and I don't know how you could possibly get all that done that's in that RFP in two, three months.
I think it was just kind of funding that next phase, I think there was the understanding that this first, this is small debt, here's where it could be, okay, now we're gonna have to spend. And whether it be, because I don't, we still don't have an answer for sure, or the MBTA might, if the next hundred or two hundred thousand for the actual design part, we can then go forward, and whether we're gonna need to go to CPC or someone else, none of those things have an answer.
But they will after you get the design this next five weeks?
Yeah.
Personally, I don't think this Pier forty-four should be rushed.
Right.
Um, I think it's really important that we get a break, and I think that the, um, the, Mr. Barker, who was the chair, saw, you know, what happened at town meeting and wanted to be sure he had everything, eyes dotted, teeth crossed, and have enough time to educate the community about what the different options are, et cetera, so honestly, I don't think at this point that even, even November would be, I think we'd be kind of rushing it with all the stuff to do.
Yeah, you, you know the most about it, you.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, I've been dealing with Mr. Barker, which.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, no, yeah, I can see, I mean, it's been very.
But if you get, if you get the RFP back in four weeks, do you at least be able to make the decision for the next step? Would you need funding for it or not?
I think he's gonna wanna do, you know, uh, public hearings and get more public input.
Okay, so.
And then just decide based on what the public input is, to what kind of funding we might need, would we need more CPC money? Where, where are we with the MBTA, so there's a lot of work left to do and.
Right.
And I'm great.
So that has any impact on this, on these things?
Not, not, I think he'll be disappointed, but I think better to be safe.
Okay, so if it sounds like I'm in September, then everyone's fine with this date?
If the education piece gets done properly with the sighting.
Right.
And if they're, do they have time to take into account the changes that we might wanna make to it in terms of getting it smaller perhaps? Maybe not having trucks parked up there, I mean, there's a whole host of.
But they didn't even come back to us, remember, we've only seen them once.
Right.
They gotta come back, because they didn't even have our feedback.
That was in, it was in their.
So we, we gotta get in touch with them and get, get, tell them what we think, a little bit more than just kind of personally looking at it for ten minutes a week.
Yeah, we've already given them some feedback and then we don't want two buildings.
Yeah, but we want.
But the two buildings increases the amount of site work you have to do, the amount of trees you have to take down, and that way you put, because you're, you're separating them, you put them in one building, there's less site work that has to be done, so, um.
Yeah, I think we wanna give feedback to them a lot of, uh, now that we've got a chance to digest it all, so.
Do you want it on the next agenda?
Um, yeah.
That's earlier than better, I think.
And do you think Andrew, your president, lead me?
From the survey, and I'm just trying to think of timing, one, two.
What's the survey? What survey are we doing?
Where do you wanna put the treatment plant survey?
I don't know, just think about.
Are we surveying all the places that are potential, but I don't understand.
No, questions about, um, how do you want us to, what's the best way to communicate with you? There was a question about, you know, do you think it should go there, how you feel about it, just so now, I could pull it up on it or not.
I mean, there's only one community that is really invested in this, I think we just have to, and maybe a handful of other people. I think we just gotta get that group together several times and talk them through the process. Right, I mean, the reason why we bought the land and the reason why we all support it is because it's been described as the best place for it to go. Um, you know, we just have to tell the neighbors there and walk through with them, their questions, and see if we can design it appropriately. And I don't mean to say we shouldn't look at other options, but you already did that before you. They're the ones that are gonna wanna see the other options, mostly.
Yeah, I guess I'm, so I don't understand the potential of the survey. I, I fully am on board with, with caring and, and, you know, meeting with the neighbors and and all of that, and identifying all of the different areas that we've already looked at that aren't feasible, right? Wasn't that part of what you've been collecting as well?
That's why I need to explain the survey a bit more, that's some of us outreach do, those neighborhoods and other parts are, like, how do you wanna get it? Do you wanna hear my website, do you wanna take that, not just that, but also to learn some of what those concerns are before, uh, delving forward. And know which questions we need to answer as we put the information together for people. You know, so you can tailor that message to what people want, wanna know, what, what are the questions about the water treatment?
Okay. So do you want the June twenty-eighth meeting instead of the June fourteenth meeting?
Do you think you'll get your survey answers back by then?
Yeah.
June twenty-eighth meeting?
Definitely on the twenty-eighth, well, yeah.
I mean, there's a.
We don't have to ask about the fourteenth.
It's an hour at the end of June, now we have two months, two and a half months before we're gonna bring it to town meeting. I mean, we should be meeting these people every month. And answering their questions. You have to say.
Well, the big question.
Right.
We do a bunch of questioning. Sure, but the big question is, the, the threshold question is, is there another place we could put this?
Right, right.
And that's what they're finishing up now, looking at all the other, all the other possible sites that the town would own that would be big enough.
Will those be raised on the fourteenth?
Should be, yeah, should almost be ready now.
We, we should probably set a meeting outside of this one that goes over this with.
Yes.
A public meeting to talk about this shortly after that.
So you don't want another select board agenda, you want a separate meeting?
For the public meeting, yeah.
Mm-hmm. But you want an update, you said you wanted time to.
Yeah.
Voice share, so.
Well, I think Andrew's point is that's probably best after the survey, because they'll give us feedback. So why don't we keep them on the twenty-eighth, and you can get the information to them before then?
Sure.
Keep who on the twenty-eighth?
The, is it Woodward Current who's coming in?
Oh, I thought you said June fourteenth was.
Yeah, you can do about the fourteen, do the survey about the fourteen.
But will you give them information to respond by?
Yes.
It's, what's the date today?
The twenty-third.
The twenty-fourth.
It's two weeks, and it should be done next week?
Probably done next week.
All in a week? But the thing.
The survey monkey, alright.
But the thing, you can give them ten things, will they get it done in a week? Maybe?
What are the ten things? So it's like our, our concerns or things that were identified?
Well, what about the surveys?
I, I think the survey's more for, um, again, understanding the public's concerns for what, what questions they want answered. So all those answers may not be done by the fourteenth, but they'll, they'll know, oh, well, they're concerned about the size of the clerical, or they're concerned about X, Y, Z.
We would need the answers by the public hearing.
So we don't want the answers for our meeting?
Yeah, those are gonna be.
We want, would encourage to come in, so we can give them feedback of what, what they're got now.
Yeah, I think if we have the results of the survey, then we'd be able to say, here are the five most important things we've got. Okay.
June fourteenth is Woodward and Carr.
All right, so back to the special town meeting, do we wanna keep that on the nineteen? If somebody does make a motion.
Luke Bell was down to come sit to a special town, April, Monday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the City of Sylph.
What date in the week is that?
Monday, Monday. Seventh.
Second by Ms. Conley, for the discussion, a nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
No, I'm single, sorry, I just.
Say no.
Oh, it's four.
It's tight, Labor is late. This September.
So that's four to one in favor. All right, the next item here is Board Committee, um, employing and individual appointments.
We printed it out, can you, so we don't have to read it off and here.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
Luke took one following individuals for term of one year until a successor's name, agent of veterans and benefits, Donald Knapp. Animal Control Board, Jim Madro, Animal Control Board, Kevin Cafferty, Archivist, Jody McDonough. Assistant Town Account, Maris Ten, Sean Nito. Citizens Rep for the Scholarship Committee, Judy Brennan Ariel. Custodian of Tax Title Property, Pam Emmett Topley. Uh, Custodian of Veterans Graves, Donald Knapp. Your Housing Officer, Jim Madro, Best Viewer, Matt Paul Murphy. Field Driver, Neil Duggan, Licensing Agent Sergeant, Phil O'Brien. Local Auction Department Agent, Tim Appetoli. Um, Massport Community Advisor, Community Calpoloid. Mass Bay Transportation Authority, Al Banger, South Shore Recycling Cooperative, Sean McCarthy. State Ethics Commission, Jim Madro, Sustainable South Shore, Luisa Scanlon, tree warden, Mike Green, and Veterans Agent, Donald Knapp. Seven.
Second by Ms. Conley, thank you for all of you for doing these, um, further discussion, a nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with Janice. And the last, uh, item on our new business is a new reindeer's license for E.W. Wood.
Luke, two reindeer's license for E.W. Wood, for, uh, to the Bridge Road, in Massachusetts.
Second by Ms. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with Janice. Are there any leaves on reports? Let's go to, uh, the, the Department of Town Administration. Let's go to, uh, the report on the town administrator, can you just go over any?
Yeah, I mean, we did the COVID update yesterday, really, I'm having data, it was incomplete because of problems with the state. State reporting system, but we believe to know that the numbers are jumping, total number reported, the board out from ninety-three to sixty-two. Positivity rate went from eight point eight to six point one six since you were, over the week, so.
Say that again?
The positivity rate went from, uh, six point one six up to eight point eight. So, uh, the state went from eight point six eight and nine point five nine, so the numbers keep going up. It is recommended in communities that are, uh, have high risk of COVID, which is almost every community, Massachusetts, Cleveland, Atlanta. Let people wear masks indoors, there are several communities who have re-imposed mask mandates. Town is always following state guidelines, we've not done that, that's to let people know that maybe you need to put your mask back in the car. Uh, in case you go to another community, you might find yourself facing, uh, needing to wear a mask. Uh, we're emphasizing the hospitalization numbers, so there's seventy-five individuals I see this week, that's up from sixty-four. Uh, twenty-five patients are intubated up from twenty-two. So those numbers remain low, that's what Drew keeps telling me to keep an eye on, uh, because of vaccination rates, so again, get vaccinated if you haven't been. Get boosted if you haven't been, if you get boosted, you get your second booster. Uh, water numbers are still good, we're still on the plus one point two five in the reservoir, uh, plus one point two five at TAC factory. We had downed about one point two million gallons of usage a day, down from one point three the previous week. Magnificent levels are still high, the water treatment plant, one one point seven, point one six nine. Uh, so that will cause discolored water if you run the plant too much, we haven't been running it that much this week. Uh, we wanna remind people that, um, with the spread weather, there is a proliferation of cowwash fundraisers. Uh, you need permission from the water department before you have your cowwash fundraiser. So as long as we have water, they'll approve it, but you need to go through them before you have your cowwash. I think the big thing we want to let people know, uh, and we mentioned earlier, is that the Drift Inn. The concession at the golf course will officially open for business on Thursday, it's down the table, it's great. Obviously, a few bunks, so we get the whole place set up, but, uh, they're ready to go. And they'll be serving lunch and dinner out of the gate, and they'll eventually do live practice. So it looks good, I've seen the menu, it's kind of across from what they have now, uh, and some more pub food type things, so I think it'll be a big hit. Uh, and we're really looking to do that, uh, we're gonna have a river cutting, I think at six forty-five on Thursday, we're officially open the building, so. Uh, come on down, you don't have to play golf, they'll eat there, you can go to woodrowswalkgolf.com and the additional details will be forthcoming, so. Uh, the only two other things, uh, Mass DOT did strike the rotary last night. Their system put off on Sunday night last night, that's looking good, and if you get on the harbor, we have set up the outdoor seating against the galley. Uh, they have permission to that, that won't expire now till April of twenty twenty-three, they extended the outdoor dining until then, so. Uh, they're set up, it's only in front of their building, it does not extend to either side. So we set that up for them, get them ready for Memorial Day and that takes care of pretty much all the restaurants down, the restaurants have outdoor seating, they've committed. And actually amended their licenses for outdoor seating, so it's only the galley that's on the temporary outdoor seating at this point. That's really the highlights of what I have this week.
Questions for Jim? I have a two quick ones, Jim, I saw that there were, um. Change orders that were, uh, in the backup, there was a forty thousand dollar one for the water outreach. Is that additional money that we're paying them to outreach to the public?
It's really, we've done outreach contract previously, but we didn't have the funds to do it, so we just updated it to the outreach for after. So that's what we're talking, wanna have the company do those, uh, meetings, neighborhood meetings, put together the website, and it'll have all the different pieces of land and everything. Uh, yeah, we approved that previously, but we didn't do it, so we just updated it for the new, uh, session.
It's forty thousand dollars for them to have community meetings and put a website there?
It's, it, it's a lot of work, what we're doing, uh, I can get to the contract, all the stuff we're doing, but it's more than one meeting, it's several meetings. Meeting with you, meeting with the neighborhood, meeting with individual people if we have to, uh, putting all that information together.
But that wasn't part of the original contract, is it a change order there?
Yeah.
Isn't that part of the normal process of a project and duty to the community?
Not to the extent that we're doing now.
Seems crazy.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I don't think it was actually original contract. It was, but we asked for it, and we did ask for it in the original, but it didn't make it into the first contract.
I do it as a project.
It was part of what we wanted them to do, but.
So you'll take the forty thousand dollars.
I think that was some cost of that going on.
A little.
I'll do it for that.
Yeah.
Fortunately, it's not a cost, it's, this PR stuff is.
It's a huge project, huge significance to the town, and communicating about it is a huge job. And I personally think that we thought it was going to be as part of their proposal. And I went back and I read the proposal, but they did include information about their outreach efforts and their expertise in that area. I never looked at the contract line by line to see if it was in there, but, um, somewhere along the line, I think it was decided that it was not necessary, and I disagreed.
Well, so there are.
I strongly disagreed.
There are public meetings that the engineer comes and goes to us, goes to conservation, goes to all the boards, does the presentation, that's part of the contract. This is beyond that, this is really just PR, information outreach about the program as opposed to just coming into the board saying. Okay, here it is, this is what it looks like, this is how big it is, this is what we're gonna play. Much more targeted, focused, actual community outreach and information.
Many projects fail because, quote unquote, it was just PR, right?
It's very true, it is, I mean, forty thousand is point zero 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 eight percent of. The whole, whole package project. Uh, I mean, I do remember. Yeah, having that communication person there is one of the reasons, you know, it's worrying, uh, being on the. Looking at all that, that makes this pretty important, um, for that, so. Adam's in there now, I think it's important, um, and I think the end results, I guess, there.
I agree it's important, I agree that it should have been in there, and I agree it's way too much money for three public meetings with the, with all four Jerome people. Is there any way we can communicate that back to them?
Yeah.
Unless the board wants to agree.
I just wouldn't wanna see this fail because we didn't spend the forty thousand, that's what we spent.
I'm not saying not, but I'm not saying not to do it, but this seems like a little bit of a.
It wouldn't have seemed like that much if, if it had been just in the, the big contract, unfortunately calling it out now.
It's an appointment. Um, and there was another one on there for two hundred nineteen thousand dollars for the old open bucket pilot? Is that what you were just?
Yeah, so the original contract had money to move everything and do it up here, do it up there at the reservoir. So instead of doing that, that would be stricken from the contract and then just move the money to do it in advance, that's all.
But why, why is there a change order for two hundred nineteen thousand dollars?
Because we're gonna do the pilot program now, down at the current treatment plant as opposed to doing it in phase.
But we already have money, so is phase three gonna be two hundred twenty thousand dollars cheaper?
It would actually be about three hundred thousand dollars cheaper, yeah, this will actually save us money, that's why we approved it.
But we just have to pay it now, they can't just take it out of the.
No, it says that's phase three, we're gonna do a pilot up here, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we have to move the plant, we're gonna relocate the plant, we have to put a road in, we're gonna put access.
Okay, so phase three will see a.
Won't as much, that's right, this is a negative credit, they got it.
Those are the questions right there. You have them?
I do.
Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question, so the fiscal twenty-three budget numbers, how do they compare to what we projected? The ones that came from the state in the, in the past budget that was released?
We're still benefiting.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, oh, I figured, I didn't know it was probably less than that, 'cause you're always, it's hundred thirty, two hundred forty, I believe. Oh, okay, now, and, um, there's been a lot of chatter this week, I know we talked about Indian parents and there's. I got a long list of people that are clamoring for them, I know you said you benefit, and we just, um, used the same social media post that we did and. And start that process, I know Kyle has already been talking to Bob about, um, some of the ABC.
Yeah, this is on my, tomorrow.
Okay, and what, you don't remember that, okay.
Any questions, Jim? Right, um, correspondence, I think we went through most of them. Kind of motion will approve the meds.
Luke took seven minutes with select board meeting held May tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second by.
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with unanimous. And I have a motion to adjourn inside documents.
Second.
Second by Miss Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with unanimous, five zero, good night, everyone, and thank you guys for doing the film work. We'll try and be quick on this time.